Board members, we are getting a passing grade from our AV person in terms of our performance, except he does ask that we remember to turn down the microphones rather than turning them up based on our, as is our tradition. So it will help a little bit, but we're doing okay. Just for folks who are following, we are, just have two items from this morning to finish up. The first one is Dr. Oa, and this is approval of new committee members, new members for the PLSB to replace folks who are, who are leaving.
Good afternoon. Jeremy Oa, Assistant Commissioner of Educator Effectiveness. I'm here to present to you for your consideration, the nomination of Dr. Ellen E. Treadway, Associate Professor of Teaching, Learning, and Leadership at Arkansas Tech University Center for Leadership and Learning. She's been nominated by the Arkansas Professors of Educational Administration Organization to represent their membership on the Professional Licenseur Standards Board.
All right. Any questions? Entertained a motion to approve Dr. Treadway?
Second.
All right. Motion by Ms. Chambers, second by Dr. Hill. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Okay, great. Thank you, Dr. Oa. All right. We are now up to item seven, which is a public school choice appeal, and I'll turn it over to Ms. Dedman to explain our procedure.
Good afternoon. Jennifer Dedman, Attorney for the Department. You should have in your packets an overview of the Public School Choice Act of 2015. If you'll allow me, I'll just take a moment and hit the high points. Okay. The Act allows a student to attend a non-resident district subject to the restrictions contained in Arkansas Code annotated 618-1906. Any student who applies for a transfer and is denied by the non-resident district may appeal that denial to the State Board. There are a few restrictions. If the provisions of the law conflict with a provision of an enforceable desegregation order or a court-approved desegregation plan limiting the transfer of students between districts, the plan or the order will govern. A district claiming that conflict must submit, of course, that order or plan as proof that the order or plan is active and enforceable. The law does set a 3% net maximum limit on school choice transfers each year from a district, and the district may set standards concerning the acceptance or rejection of a school choice application. Those standards can include the capacity of a program, a class, a grade level, or a school building. A district can claim lack of capacity only if the district has reached at least 90% of the maximum authorized student population in a program, class, grade level, or school building. The standards may not include other certain things: academic achievement, athletic or extracurricular ability, English proficiency, special education needs, except those allowed under capacity or previous disciplinary proceedings except expulsions. We do have one school choice appeal today. The Gilbert family is here today to appeal the decision of the Elkins School District to deny their child's school choice application for the 2018-2019 school year. The family resides in Fayetteville School District. We have representatives from Elkins and Fayetteville here today, as well as both parents. The additional information that you have before you, actually, we have information that has been provided in the packet that begins with hearing procedures. We also have some additional information that has been provided by the Gilbert family, which I'll hand out to you now. This information, we discovered this morning, is missing one page, so you'll receive two things from me momentarily. Again, this additional information that you're receiving has been provided by Ms. Gilbert. The representatives for all of the parties will need to be sworn in. The hearing rules, which you've already heard from Ms. Blagg today, are, they provide four or five minutes for each party to present, beginning with the non-resident district. Then each party will have 20 minutes for their full argument, beginning again with the non-resident district, and then each party will have five minutes of rebuttal time at their option.
All right. Okay, and so if members of the Gilbert family who plan to testify, as well as representatives of the Elkins and Fayetteville districts, would please stand and raise your right hand. Thank you. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Great. And so, Ms. Dedman, we start with the Elkins District, correct? Great.
Dr. Board, I'm Barth. Members of the Board, thank you for allowing me to be here this afternoon. In brief-
If you'll just identify yourself for the record.
Sorry. I'm Dan Jordan, the Superintendent of Elkins School District.
Thank you, Mr. Jordan. No, it's great.
In short, the district denied this particular student's school choice application because his enrollment would have resulted in the district having to add a paraprofessional to meet the student's needs. He even told me to do that. I'm sorry. Should I start over?
You're fine. Go ahead.
Okay. The district's denial letter, my letter to the parent of May 8, that should be in your packet, stated that the reason for denial was the additional cost that the district would incur, but it did not make, it did not make clear the additional, the cost being referenced was regarding the addition of professional staff. However, my point about that is the addition of the paraprofessional that is, is the basis on which the application was denied. The School Choice Act does not require school districts to add teachers, staff, or classrooms in any way to exceed requirements or the standards established by current law. And our district also established, I say established, they adopted, the school board adopted in the April Board Meeting, a resolution, as we do each year, which would have the right to reserve capacity of any grade levels, programs, et cetera, for that coming school year based on our current student population. And this year, that didn't require us to do that after we, after May 1, when I went through those applications. However, it did list that we, we could deny an application if it would require the district to add additional staff for any reason, and that would be the last bullet on the resolution. In short, again, I would share that the timeline and the process this past year, well, several years, actually, is a little unique, and I'll share more about that when I have my opening in just a few moments, to share the timeline and how that kind of muddied the water, if you will. And I will do that when I speak in a few moments.
So next to Fayetteville, correct? Or next to the parent. Always get confused on the order here. I apologize, Ms. Dedman.
No problem. This is the representative for Elkins School District. The next speaker will be the, the parent. The board may address the representative from Fayetteville School District if you have any questions.
Okay, but, but we don't reserve time for the Fayetteville?
No, sir.
Okay, great. All right. I'll turn it over to the Gilbert family, and you all have up to five minutes for opening, and then we'll have additional time later on.
I'm Angela Gilbert, Jeb's mom. We just want him to go to the school that's best for him. We thought that would be Elkins. We put him for a school of choice. We had meetings about him going there. That led us to believe that they had accepted the school of choice, and then they turned around and denied it. So we're just here to try and get him into Elkins to do, so he has the best education possible for his disability.
All right.
Is it a question now?
Let's, let's, let's hold on just a second. I'm sure, I'm sure, sure Board members are gonna have more questions.
Okay. And what she had handed out, I have the unredacted copies of that. Do I need to hand those out now, or?
I think it's fine unless an individual member wants an unredacted, unredacted copy. Is everybody all right with redacted in this case? Okay. I think it's pretty clear from the redactions, but if folks have question, if they do want the original, they can get it. So, great.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. All right. And so I'll turn it back to the Elkins District, and they have now up to 20 minutes for your presentation, if you need additional time.
Thank you. Additional, no, I'll share that in a moment. The process that I referenced earlier, outside the, the law and requirements of the public school choice, we go through a process each year in, in Nookers, Arkansas. Been up there for five years as superintendent, and, and the, the school choice has increased, certainly in our district, if it's in terms of numbers. The, we are allowed a certain number of max net, either growth or loss of students, and our number this year was 37, which has nothing to do with this particular issue at hand. And I think we wind up growing by 35 this year, if all of them show. So that part of the law is, is in place. What occurred is last year, last school year, 16, 17 school year, on May the 30th, the mother made application for school choice for this fall, this current school year. That was within 29 days of the deadline for last fall. And when those come in, we, we, there's nothing in the law that says, determines when they can come in. There is, however, a deadline of May 1 for them to be in, to be considered for the fall of the, of the next current school year. As those come in, they simply collect it in a folder in the superintendent's office. Our superintendent's office, Administration Building, is actually a quarter of a mile down, Highway 16, from where the four campuses are. And they went, they're there, and they wind up in a folder. And that June, after that June 30th, the following month on, excuse me, that May 30th, on the following month, June 30th, my secretary, who is actually the receptionist, retired, and was replaced the following month in June, July 17 by Ms. Eaton, is, is who is currently in that place. So all they do is collect, I'm sharing that with you because there were two different people that collected these, and they simply collect them for me to take a look at them when we get ready to do this in April, start the process. So that was in May of 17. On March 15th, there was a transition conference. This particular child has been enrolled in the Yvonne Richardson Center. You'll see that information in your packet. And it's a routine procedure that they have transition conferences for these students into the school districts where they're going to attend, actually, even in the school buildings they're gonna attend, for programming and IEPs and so forth. Excuse me. That happened on March 15th at Elkins because the application was an Elkins address with an Elkins zip code. However, the parent had applied for school choice, and no one at the school knew it, because I don't share that information with the schools until we, until we go through the school choice process. So sitting in the central office was a request to come on school choice that no one knew about at the building, and they had the preliminary conference on March 15 with the Richardson Center folks, as well as the psych examiner, as I understand. That was March. In April 15th this year, then, when I, at the end of April, I start the process. I have the secretary complete a spreadsheet, first of all, with time and date of applications, so that when we get down to meet our net 37 this year, or not, we have to make those decisions. I have her do it both that way, as well as by grade level. So we'll know how many students in each grade level. I have to have that information as we start that process to know, to create a resolution for my school board to pass in April, should we have to limit any grade level due to our numbers that already exist, if that makes sense. During that process, the board, we did come with resolution. You see a copy of that in, I've already mentioned to you that we did not have to limit any grade levels, but with regard to the program, this particular student would be required to have an aid, and I'll get more to that in just a moment. The, when I, and I want to say it was late April, April to May, I can't tell you a date, when I saw that this child, you see the application in there, the redacted portion of that had four different characteristics that the child presented with, and I got that to my LEA. We, in Elkins, we share a special ed supervisor with three other districts. Excuse me. We co-op that for affordability for our district. And I told her what we had and asked her to check into that, and she went about that process. Coming back from that process, she shared that there had been a, she didn't recognize the name, but when she talked to her special ed consultant that works with our district, discovered that that was a name that we had just had a, a conference on back before spring break. And all those things began to, to fuse at that point, and she determined, she shared with me that the Yvonne Richardson Center staff, education staff, the psychological examiner, and our staff that after some time, a date in April, before they knew that this was a school of choice child, actually went to the Yvonne Center, Richardson Center to make an observation of this child. And all three of those, the center, the psych examiner, and our people said that this child would need additional support when they began kindergarten in the classroom. That support would be in the, in the form of an aid that we don't currently have in our district. So after the May 1 deadline, which was after the March resolution, the April resolution in board, we, I collected those and crafted all the letters in haste. My letter to the parent was poorly worded in that it didn't fully explain the additional staff requirement. It was, and I took the advice of my LEA supervisor, and, and I should have been deeper in that, and I admit that. But we didn't qualify the additional aid was the reason for the incurring additional cost. Mid-May, then, the second conference was scheduled. The principal, at this time, when, when I do those, I send copies of the letter to the building and copies of the letter to the parent, and then obviously the secretary does the things with other districts with that communication. Mid-May, he called to share that, what he had, he had discovered, and, which was the fact that this school of choice was, had been denied, and so they didn't have the second conference, which was going to be the actual physical IP and that process. I have a broad copies of the, of an actual psychological evaluation, but I don't think that's appropriate for me to share that with you and with the board further. But that's basically what happened, and the series of events around what happened. I'd be happy to answer any questions or whatever.
Okay. All right. So we can do questions now, and then, okay. Ms. Oka?
Yes. At what point did you all discover that this was a Fayetteville attendance zone student and not an Elkins student?
When you say y'all, do you mean me?
Whoever, whoever discovered it and brought it to the attention of you.
Well, actually, the person that would have brought it to our attention would have been the parent that completed the school of choice application.
Okay. So she knew, and y'all didn't recognize it immediately?
I didn't even look at the folder. They, the secretary knows as they come along, them, this is throughout the year. This, last, last year, it seems like the, the first one was like in July. This one happened the same month as the last due date.
Planning ahead.
They're simply collected in a file, school choice file. Everyone knows where they are. In case that receptionist is out, any, anybody, any of the people that work in my building know that when they come in, they're supposed to time it, and they're supposed to date stamp it, so that we know exactly when those come in. So there's a sequential order, if we should have to get to a max net and deny someone for that. So that's just the process that everyone knows in the office, and they're just, they're just put in there.
Okay. Thanks.
Get that. Answer the question.
Ms. Reif, any questions?
I, I, for the family, more than anything, or at this time, it's just very happy to got you.
They still, they still get 20 more minutes, so it's really just any clarifying thing about the department, about the Elkins District's activity here. Anybody else have questions?
I just have one quick question. Did you accept any other special ed students this year?
There were no other special ed students this year. There were many with 504 and speech and physical therapy and other issues, but, but no special ed student this particular year.
Did you hire, did you hire any other staff for, for any incoming students?
No, ma'am, we did not.
Any other questions over here? All right. We'll, we'll be back to you for, for more questions later, but we'll go back to the family. And so you do have 20 minutes if you'd like to respond to anything, clarify anything, or expand on, on your previous comments.
I went and picked up a school of choice application before, not this last school year, but the previous school year, and turned it in before they had got let out for summer. I informed ERC, the Elizabeth Richardson Center, that we did live in Fayetteville, but I was doing school of choice. They actually, which is in the packet y'all have, sent a letter to that. I did mention it in the transition meeting that we had, because we talked about what bus he would ride, and that we are the only house on that road that is Fayetteville School District. They set up the transition meeting. They also called to set up an IEP meeting with us, which was canceled two days before that because I had gotten a rejection letter about the school of choice. I spoke with the principal and asked him for written documentation about canceling the meeting, and he gave me a whole list of reasons why he could not do that. So I don't, I mean, down to, I mean, he even brought up that ERC was responsible for writing his kindergarten transit, IEP, which I don't think that's how that works, but it was one of the reasons why I couldn't get written documentation about canceling a meeting. So I don't, I just didn't understand the process that went on and why they would start the transition in the IEP meetings if we weren't supposed to be doing that. That just confused me. So I, I, they did send us a notice of the conference that we were supposed to have, but I got it a day after the meeting was supposed to happen. So I don't, I don't know what else I need to tell you.
Okay. I think folks may have some questions for you. Any questions on this side?
She's the expert in this area.
Ms. Reif, anything?
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Gilbert, and it's obvious how important this is to you and your family. If you could just give a little bit more context in regards to why this transfer is so important to you, and, and why you think Elkins is the better fit?
It's a smaller school, so from kindergarten through his high school years, he would have the same core group of friends, which is important for him. He's autistic and needs consistency. We've lived in Elkins his whole life, so it's the community that he's used to. There are other children at ERC that he goes to school with now that will be going to Elkins, so he'll already have friends there. I just feel it's the best fit for him.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms., I think, I think your husband would like to add a few points, too.
Also, getting him to go to Elkins is important to me. I went to Elkins, actually during the transition meeting, the teacher that sat in was a grade below me. So as a kindergarten teacher, for him, getting one of the two teachers that I went to high school with would be amazing. I mean, I could talk to the teacher, let him know what's going on, you know, if something at home's happening, anything else. And this is a community I've been raised in, grew up in, and I want my son to be raised and grow up in the same. That's all I had.
Great.
I could ask a follow-on question. Did you all know when you purchased your home that you were zoned for Fayetteville and not Elkins?
We lived there before she was even pregnant, before we were even married. We lived in that house.
So when it came time to start school, we found out where we were supposed to be and took the steps that we needed to take so he could go to Elkins.
It's actually the home that I lived in from the time I was in ninth grade to graduation had Elkins, and the school bus actually picked me up at that house every day.
It's the only bus that goes by that house is Elkins.
Fayetteville bus stops at the end of the dirt road, and so my son would be dropped off a half mile from the house if he goes to Fayetteville.
And, and to which school are you zoned in Fayetteville?
It's Happy Hollow.
Fayetteville's my home. So yeah, no, definitely, no Happy Hollow. Most definitely, most definitely. Thank you. Those were my questions.
Ms. Oka?
Okay. You may or may not want to share. I was a teacher of autistic children, so I appreciate, but can you give me as little or as much information as you feel comfortable about why they believe that, that, that he will need a paraprofessional or teacher's aide, or whatever the reference is? What did the, in the conference, did that come from the district? Did that come from the, the sending center? How was?
It came from an old review, pretty much one of his first reviews when he went to ERC. That's what they went off of. He was scheduled to have another evaluation, and Elkins actually wanted ERC to go ahead and give that to him, so that we could see where he was at. And that was actually part of the next meeting, as well, with his IEP, was that evaluation would be done, so we'd have more information, actually know if he needed an aid.
Is he verbal?
Yes.
Okay. And so the aid is more for re-explaining, for modifying or controlling behavior, or, because I work with a lot of autistic kids, but very, very few ever needed a paraprofessional of their own.
Honestly, I doubt that he would need one. I mean, if he did, it would be a couple days till he got used to new school. And after that-
Transitioning, meaning from going from one thing to another, he might need somebody to be like, oh, we're gonna do this first, and then we'll go do this.
Right. Is the current provider, do they provide that service, the transition for the children?
They do, I believe, the first day. They go to that school. Is that, I believe they go with him on the first day and show him around and show him what he was doing, and then after that, they don't.
They have.
But they have someone to go with us to any open houses or anything like that.
Okay. But the danger comes in, you think he won't need somebody, and then he got there, and he did, and then he would have to change schools. So I think balancing that, and I do appreciate that the superintendent says, he purely worded it in that it's not that a child is costing more to educate, it's the addition of staff is what was costing more.
Right.
Right. If it would have said addition of staff, we probably wouldn't be here today.
Right.
Because we, we've read the school board's laws on it, and, but saying that it's for financial reasons makes it sound like it's his disability.
Right.
And that-
Yeah. I totally and completely understand. But I do appreciate the fact that knowing that he was going to be in the Fayetteville District and go to Elkins, that you were put, had enough foresight to get it in a year ahead. You know, you're gonna go, I want to be the first stamp.
Yes.
I get that. And I do appreciate that. He's obviously a very fortunate child to have you all as parents.
Thank you.
Ms. Chambers?
I don't know if this is a question so much as giving you an opportunity, or later maybe the superintendent, if I didn't, I'm trying to make sure I've understood, because there's, there's a lot going on in this story.
Yes.
So you put your application in early.
Yes.
There was maybe some process confusion on the school side in terms of where you lived and various things, but you got your, your app in on time. If, if their application had been first, I'm curious, it sounds like it still would have been additional staff that would have been required. It would, would, no matter if they were 37th or first, that's a question, but I'm assuming wherever they were in the order, you would have still required additional staff. I don't know if you've talked to Fayetteville yet, but if your son were to go to the Fayetteville School for Kindergarten, would, would he, have they indicated that he would have this, this additional staff as well, or would need it, or do you know?
They told me that they have.
You could just get a little closer to the mic. I appreciate it.
They told me that they have aids that are already on staff there, that if needed, they send them wherever, when they're needed.
There was maybe some process confusion on the school side in terms of where you lived and various things, but you got your, your app in on time. If, if their application had been first, I'm curious, it sounds like it still would've been additional staff that would've been required. It would, would, no matter if they were thirty-seventh or first, that's a question, but I'm assuming wherever they were in the order, you would've still required additional staff. I don't know if you've talked to Fayetteville yet, but if your son were to go to the Fayetteville School for Kindergarten, would, would he, have they indicated that he would have this, this additional staff as well, or would need it, or do you know?
They told me that they have.
You could just get a little closer to the mic, I appreciate it.
They told me that they have aides that are already on staff there, that if needed, they send them wherever, when they're needed, with whoever they are needed for. There's not like a one aide for every child, but there's just, there's extra people in the classroom.
They have sufficient staff, and that no more would need to be hired there.
Not that I know of.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
One of the comments you said just kind of struck me, there are no other Fayetteville students, no, no other students that go to Fayetteville that live around you? They're all Elkins?
There was one other student that I know of at his, where he goes to school at ERC that will be going to Elkins. I don't know about any other.
In, in your neighborhood, I guess is what I'm trying to.
In my neighborhood, I don't know of any other kids through there, no.
It's a, it's a rural area. The closest, it's probably two miles up the road to get to Fayetteville kids. I'm not sure that there's even kids there because of how spaced out the houses are.
There's like our house, another house, and then you go down the corner and there's more people, so.
Okay, and the other thing you said was the bus stopped a half a mile from your home at the end of the dirt road. Is your child going to be able to walk that distance on his own?
That was the Fayetteville bus.
That's what I'm saying, that's what I'm saying, is that if your child goes to Fayetteville?
No, uh, no, we'll be taking him if we have to, or a special bus will be coming to pick him up. I believe the special bus was what was.
Have you talked to them about accommodations for that, or?
I did speak with them. I told them we were coming up here to have this here, and that I would get back to them to enroll him if he didn't get to go to Elkins, and then that's when we would.
Work the details out?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Cochran, anything? Okay. All right. Any further questions before we, before we go back to closing, and then we'll have additional opportunities if there, there are? Okay. Thank you all very much for, for taking that time. And so, you now have really time to close, up to five minutes, but I think we're, I think we're beginning to get clear on, on things, so go ahead.
Thank you, sir. I will be quick. In closing, the district's position is that in spite of my poorly worded denial letter from the district to the parent, it is within the authority of our school district to deny this application because accepting it would result in us having to hire additional staff that we are, that we already have for this student. Thank you.
Great. And closing on this side?
Just mainly the poorly written letter is not the most of this. I just want what's best for my son and him going to a school in the community that he's been raised in, with the people that he's been around his life would help in his development. Yeah, that's what I got. Thank you.
Great, okay. I have a question for the department, and I've, we've had cases, not exactly like this, but similar, when there are special needs issues, and I know the law says no additional staffing is required, but additional resources might be necessary to meet the needs of special needs children. When the additional resources are, is a person, how do we, I'm, I'm, I'm just trying to get my head around, at what point does discrimination against students with special needs veer into acceptable prohibitions on choice because of the additional staff?
Sure. I'll guide you as far as I can. Some of this will be for the board to determine. The area that the superintendent, the area of the law the superintendent is referencing is contained in your packet at six eighteen nineteen oh three C. The subchapter does not require a school district to add teachers, staff, or classrooms in any way to exceed the requirements and standards established by existing law. The question you're asking is the difference between a service and capacity, and, and that is, is a, an issue for the board to decide.
Well, we don't have a capacity issue here in the traditional sense. Instead, we have a, an additional resource in the form of human capital, and so that's what I'm, I'm, I'm struggling with.
But isn't that what it means when it says teacher or staff?
Well, Jennifer Davis, staff attorney for the department, and this one is a tricky situation because it is a special needs student, and if services, even if that does mean it is staff, is required as a requirement under an IEP, which again, I apologize for coming in late, I was in another meeting, but I believe that this, an aide was determined that it was needed in an initial IEP evaluation. So, if services are determined as needed, then cost is not a factor, because you can't say a child's gonna cost too much money because they need a nurse or something of that nature. Usually, you see it in regards to a self-contained classroom, when it would require either the building of a new classroom or an actual teacher. But you can't say that services themselves are going to cost too much, and therefore we, we can't do that if it's required under IEP. But it would be up to you to determine whether or not the aide that is gonna be needed would be a service or would be considered staff, because it could be considered differently. Does that help?
It does, it is. And, and just to clarify, pick up on this, if, if another student arrives at, at Elkins, who lives in El, lives in the Elkins district, needs a, needs a, a paraprofessional for, along the lines of this, that would have to be required by the Elkins district because of their IEP, correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
Could you say your question one more time? She just said yes, too.
My understanding is that he's asking if, if a, if a second Elkins student who also needed a paraprofessional aide, also tried to apply for school choice in the district, would that also have to be?
No, someone who lived in the district already.
In the district already, would they, that would have to be in the IEP, the need for the paraprofessional, and, and the answer is yes, that would be required by the IEP.
Much like you'll see, like, even in a general capacity type issue, if you say you can't school choice in because my classrooms are full and I'd have to add teachers, but all of a sudden you had twenty kids move into your district, you have to add teachers because those are your students in your district. So, in the event that an Elkins student that is legally entitled to attend Elkins needed an aide, then the district would be under the obligation to add that aide regardless of that cost.
If I could ask a follow-on question to that, I, I got a, a little bit confused, because my understanding, the parents were not at the IEP, and so they were wondering if, did I understand that correctly, or were you there? And then, and then this understanding, or your, your assertion that you didn't think your child would need an additional aide?
We actually never had an IEP meeting with Elkins.
Okay.
It was scheduled for Wednesday, and then they canceled on Monday.
And that was my understanding. So then how was it determined that they needed an aide?
I don't know, because they told us in the transition meeting that that would be talked about and figured out during the IEP, when they write that, so I don't know who sat down and said, yes, he does.
So, then I guess my question's for the superintendent of the Elkins School District. From your understanding, how was it determined that an aide would be needed?
My understanding is from the trend, the first transition conference that happened late March, I'm not sure the exact date, prior to spring break, that the team from the Richardson Center, along with the team, our educational team at Elkins, in addition to the document from the psych eval, all stated that the rec, their recommendation of those three different factions were that this child would need additional support in the form of an aide when he enrolled in kindergarten.
But that was a consultation, not actually an IEP? Is that correct? And I apologize for the nuance here, I guess I'm just trying to make sure I understand.
That was not an, that was not an actual IEP conference.
Okay.
That was a transitional conference, which the center, the Yvonne Richardson Center sets up for all the students as they transition into formal regular school, and that was, that's what happened in March, when no one knew.
And it's off that recommendation, but technically, an IEP has not taken place? Am I understanding that correctly?
That's correct. And the, and the psych eval, I understand, was subsequent to that day as well, that they, that my LEA, social supervisor now has.
So, thank you so much. Thank you. I know we're, we're grappling here, and I think you've probably seen some of our faces. So, Ms. Dedham, then, or if you could answer, then, so there hasn't been an IEP, so then how in this case do we treat this transitional consultation and that, you know, the, the finding there that an aide, or the suggestion there, the recommendation there, then aide might be necessary? And I guess right now it's a might?
Yes. Courtney Solis Ford for the department. So, when a student is going from preschool into a public kindergarten, they're required to have a transition meeting in the spring to talk about what services and supports that student might need upon entering in the fall. It's not a formal IEP meeting, and IEP meeting is not developed. It, it's kind of a preparation for those incoming school districts so that they know what they might need to get prepared. So, in this case, and again, I'm just talking in general, it sounds like in this case, they have the transition meeting and the recommendation of the early childhood provider and others involved was that he might need a paraprofessional. And jumping a little bit back to Dr. Barth's question earlier, which under IDEA is a related service. Under state law, it talks about staff, but does not provide a definition for staff, so it really is up to you as the board to determine, are we considering this a service or staff? Now, going back to, so if the school was to accept the school choice, they would have to have a formal IEP meeting, including the parents, and as a team, decide whether that student did need a paraprofessional or not.
Thank you.
Dr. Barth, can I just ask one more question on this? So, the parents are not included in the transitional meeting, is that, that correct?
Traditionally, they are. I can't speak to why they were not in this case.
Okay.
Were, you were.
Oh, you were there.
Okay.
They were.
But you didn't concur with the, so sorry, but you didn't concur then with the finding that an aide would be necessary? Can you come to the mic? I apologize. It's for the purpose of public record.
They told us that we would meet again later and actually do more testing and then determine, because she sat there with him for like ten or fifteen minutes after the meeting was over, and talked with Jeb and did a few little evaluations there, but that was all that they actually did as far as evaluations.
Does he currently have his own paraprofessional aide?
No.
Okay. So, it would be highly unusual for a person doing psychological or battery of tests to make that recommendation. Maybe the service providers, the teachers, those kind of people, the parents, the people that have been working with it, and the, those receiving, but it would be highly unusual for somebody to be able to determine that doing an evaluation, particularly since you said he is verbal, right?
Right.
Okay. And did they say why that they were thinking he might need an aide?
Not, not that I recall, no.
Right. They didn't say, you know, his behavior, or they were just saying, we'll have to work on transition, which sometimes moms do that of regular kids going into kindergarten, you know? Every child is slightly different, so, okay.
And it was at the transition meeting, and every meeting, me and my wife did say to them that, you know, we are in Fayetteville School District, but we have a school of choice for him, and so that was broadcasted to.
From the very beginning, right?
Yes.
Right.
Ms. Chambers?
For the superintendent, just a quick question. So, additional staffing aside, is there room for this child?
Pardon?
Additional staffing aside, if there were no additional staffing required, is there room for this child in your, your, your choice count?
Yes, ma'am, there would be room. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Do you have?
Well, I was just gonna reference, and it's, it's part of what I, I didn't share with you, because I don't think it's appropriate through FERPA, but if it's appropriate for me to read the very last, the recommendation, it's one sentence long, from the, the eval that I referenced earlier.
But it does not reference specific attributes of, of the student?
I wasn't going to share that part.
Okay.
But there's a, the, the recommendation at the end, it lists the student by name, will probably need support in kindergarten, and appears to qualify for services under the disabling condition of autism, is what that.
But they didn't define support?
It, it's not defined in, well, it's, it didn't define the support, but it told of the issues requiring the additional service.
Does everybody feel that they have, have clarity about the issue? Okay, then we're, we're ready to move to a motion? So, the motion, a proper motion is either to accept the waiver request or reject the waiver request? Or grant the appeal or deny the appeal. Apparently, I said it wrong. Okay. Grant the appeal or deny the appeal?
I kind, and, and I struggle with this, because I have a, a good understanding of administration and finances and difficulties with that, but I also look at this as being a service to the child, and what the child needs, and with that, I move that we grant the appeal.
I'll second that.
Yes, so motion by Ms. Newton, second by Ms. Reith, further discussion. Ms. Hook?
Okay, I'm, I'm gonna sound opposite of what everybody's expecting me to say, but I'm, I'm wondering, it, in this Fayetteville school, that being, everything being the same, except it's not a Gilbert, and they are already.
Elkins.
Elkins, sorry. You're the Gilbert. I apologize. How embarrassing. That they are accepting of him, they do have aides already, they're already used to working with probably more kids, you know, with a variety of special needs. My, what, what I'm wondering is, taking all that into account, are you still wishing for us to consider the transfer to Elkins?
And Ms. Hook, if I might respond, and kind of proves a seven-year journey, we take each other's position, right? Both of us are probably taking unexpected positions in, in this regard, but I'm, what I think I'm compelled with in my case is, it, it's the rights of a special needs child, and it's not really, you know, up to any district to say, we're not gonna take somebody because of special needs, and especially for me in this case, because it's a might. We don't actually know the full, and IEP has not been done, and we haven't had the full assessment at this stage of what are the, gonna be the needs, and, and Elkins being my neighbor, and a lot of friends that actually live right next to y'all, I'm sure out there, they're in those farms, I can appreciate, it's not a one-size-fits-all, and, and I trust the instincts of the parents on this specific regard, so.
I just wanted to make a comment and, and signal, my own vote's gonna go towards an approval of the appeal, but I wanna give my sympathy to the district. You've acknowledged this could've been handled a little bit differently, which probably made a tough situation tougher. But I also think this latitude that we have in, in going kind of back and forth between services and staff would be confusing to, I mean, because they're, they're being asked to be very thoughtful about staffing and expense management, and I think, so I credit that, of course, but my own response is to the individual child, and what will hopefully help this individual child in terms of the district that's been appealed for.
I can also clarify a little bit that the sort of steps that you take is, a child is, is given an opportunity to succeed in the absolute least restrictive setting, which would be with no aide, or that kind of thing, and then, if that scene is needed, gradually move into more and more what's called restrictive setting till you get to the free and appropriate education. But you don't just automatically assume because of a handicap, or an age, or a past history, that they're gonna still need all of those things. It's up to the district to start in the least, whether it be service or setting or whatever, and then gradually move there, so, you know, what they'll need or not, probably won't know until school gets started, or, you know, and life worked for a little while.
Further discussion, I'll call for a roll call on this, on this one.
Okay. On the motion to grant the appeal, Ms. Reith?
Yes.
Ms. Hook?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Dr. Hill?
Yes.
Ms. Newton?
Yes.
Mr. Black?
Yes.
Six yeas, zero nays.
Great. Congratulations to the Gilbert family. Thank you for your dedication to Jeb, and safe travels to everyone, and thanks, thanks for being here. All right. I remind you that item eight from this morning was pulled, so that moves us finally to the afternoon agenda. And our, first up is a series of Act twelve forty waiver requests, and Ms. McLaughlin will take the lead on this. the lead on this.
Kelly McLaughlin, Charter School Office. The first item is Action Item B 1A for Highland School District, and we have Act 1240 of 2015 allows a school district to petition the State Board of Education for all or some of the waivers granted to open enrollment public charter schools that serve students who reside in the school district, and representatives of the Highland School District are appearing before the board with a petition for waivers. The district will have twenty minutes to make their presentation, and if there are, if there is anyone here for opposition, they will also have that amount of time as well, and then the district will have five minutes to respond before the Q and A session begins. Their topic, they are here to request waivers over library media licensure, and their ninety days will expire on August the sixth, two thousand and eighteen, and they are requesting for five years.
Great.
Okay.
And so if the folks from the Highland District will stand and raise your right hand to be sworn, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Great. As you heard, you have up to twenty minutes to make your case.
Mr. Don Sharp, the superintendent, will begin the presentation.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Sharp.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Don Sharp. I'm the superintendent of the Highland School District, and I'm here today to request an Act 1240 waiver regarding licensure for a library media specialist. To give you a little bit of background about Highland School District, we are a rural school district in north central Arkansas. At the end of this most recent school year, our enrollment was approximately sixteen hundred and forty students, grades K through twelve. We have a free and reduced lunch eligibility of approximately seventy-four percent, so we are a relatively poor district as far as, as far as that goes. We are approximately an hour and a half away from the nearest four-year university, which is Arkansas State University in Jonesboro. So as a result of this, sometimes it becomes difficult to obtain a significant number of applicants for positions, because we don't have, we don't have the local people graduating with those degrees like someone, say, closer to the Jonesboro area. Just a little bit of history on our library media staffing. At the end of the two thousand and fifteen, sixteen school year, and this was prior to my, to my term as superintendent at Highland, all three campuses, which is Cherokee Elementary School, Highland Middle School, and Highland High School, all three library media positions turned over. The high school library media specialist retired, the middle school library media specialist retired, and the Cherokee Elementary Library Media Specialist, as per her request, was reassigned to the middle school. The high school position was filled in-house. And again, I was not there when this took place, this is information that's been given to me. And the, but for the elementary library media vacancy, there was not any, there was not any adequate, I guess in the consideration of the previous superintendent, applicants for the position. So she hired, recommended to the board, and the board hired a lady named Sarah McClure, and Sarah is here with us today. Sarah has a master's degree in library science. She does not have an education degree, nor does she have an education license. It was the assumption of the previous superintendent that she would be eligible for licensure through the alternative licensure program. This was a false assumption, unfortunately. When we started working on our accreditation documentation that fall to submit to the state, and I realized that she did not have a proper alternative licensure plan filed, and we proceeded to try to file that as we most, as every school does, when they, it's necessary to hire someone out of licensure area, we found out that she was not eligible to participate in the alternative licensure program, nor was she eligible for the Apple So we started scrambling, what can we do? And under the advice of the Department of Education Licensor Division, I was informed that my only option at that point would be to register her as a long-term substitute for the rest of that school year. It was obvious she knew what she was doing. I can tell you that Ms. McClure has thirteen years' experience working in the central Arkansas library system. She has eight years as manager of the D. Brown Library in southwest Little Rock, and she opened the Hillary Rodham Clinton Children's Library and Learning Center here in Little Rock in two thousand and thirteen. So she's served out that year as a long-term substitute. In the meantime, she was working with University of Central Arkansas, trying to see what she could do to get into some type of program where she might could obtain a license. And she did a great job. The administrators in the elementary school, the teachers, the parents, all told me how much, how proud they were of where our library system had come from where it had been previously. And it was obvious that it was important for our students, if we could, to try to keep Ms. McClure on as a, as our library media specialist. But, once again, up against a wall, and she was not eligible. All she could do was enroll in the teacher education program through the University of Central Arkansas and pursue a license, an initial license, in middle school education, which she has done, and she's completed fifteen hours in that direction, but she's still several college classes away from doing that. And even then, she won't have a library media license, she will have a middle school license, and then she will have to pursue the library media license through the alternative licensure program. So, so it's a long, a long process for her to get to that point. Sarah's at this, so when we came down to the seventeen, eighteen school year, I was informed by the department's licensure division that they did have the authority to grant a second year as a long-term substitute. So I made that application, it was granted, and she has just completed her second year as a long-term substitute. There is no third-year eligibility. So today, I just stand here before you saying, for the sake of six hundred students in Cherokee Elementary School at Highland, I would ask that you please consider granting this waiver. It is a waiver that is held by the Arkansas Virtual Academy. We have students in our district that attend, that take courses through the Arkansas Virtual Academy, we have students enrolled in the Highland School District that take classes through Arkansas Virtual Academy, and is, again, it is a waiver that they have been granted. I also have folks here from, representing our elementary school, including Ms. McClure herself. If you have any questions, they can, they can talk a lot more and a lot more in detail and eloquently about where our library program is now compared to where it was before.
Thank you, Mr. Sharp. We'll see what questions we have. Ms. Cochran, do you have a question?
I just want to say it's a really exciting opportunity for those students. The library media specialist is the gatekeeper to the world for many students, and it's just really exciting.
Is Dr. Owe still in here?
He's over there.
He's going to hate me before.
I think he's trying to get an answer to your question before you ask it.
Jeremy Owe, Educator Effectiveness, that's correct. Yes, ma'am.
Dr. Owe, please don't hate me, okay? All right. This morning, we talked about the critical shortages, library media is one of them.
Yes, ma'am.
And it just seems to me a shame that someone with a master's degree in library media can't, is going to have to go through, you know, going and getting a middle school certification, and then going back and trying to get a library media certification. Is there not some way that we can fill in this gap somehow or another to address this? Because, you know, a master's in library science, to me, shows that, you know, she's got it, and then maybe we could fill in some classes, but that seems like a lot of, hoops is probably not the right word, but hoops to jump through to get that licensure.
Currently, the answer is no, but we, I was comparing with Melissa Jackson, our licensure department, our unit, to see if our emergency teaching permit would permit a library media specialist to, someone without the license, to be able to fill that position. And the stipulations or the requirements for the emergency teaching permit stipulates teaching positions, and so we'll definitely look at that to see if the, that would work, but that would only be approved for a year with the option for addition to years, so it really wouldn't be a long-term fix. Now, what we could also do is look at, you know, we would have to look at rules being changed to, to really look at that, because right now, library media specialist is an endorsement, so you would already have to have a license to, to add that on, but I'm going to ask Mrs. Jackson to come up.
Well, Melissa Jackson, I'm the coordinator for educator licensure. There are some things that we could look at in the future for doing, but right now, there's not a way for you to get library media in any other way, but as an endorsement. We have created some ways within the rules that we could do ancillary licenses, and we can look at that, and that may be what we want to do with library media, to be honest, is look at that and see if that's viable. We have thought about that already, but that's where we stand right now.
You know, I encourage, I have, I have, I was thinking it was on my license, I didn't realize it was just an endorsement, but anyway, I encourage us. I mean, with it being a critical shortage, and then we're trying to make them go through all these different steps, and she's already got a master's, I think, I think that's an area we really need to take a look at.
We will do that.
Thank you.
And I wholeheartedly agree with Ms. Newton, and when Ms. McClure reached out to me, I was befuddled by the, by this case, and, but I think we've learned some lessons, and I think we, we need to make some smarter decisions about the use of really talented people in the state.
Yes, absolutely.
Great. Ms.?
No, just a clarifying question, it could be for the department or the district. The number of years for this waiver, was that stated?
Five.
Five? Okay, just double check. Thank you.
Ready for a motion? First off, is there any opposition? All right. Ready for a motion?
I move we grant the waiver.
Motion by Ms. Newton, second by Dr. Hill.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Congratulations, thank you for, for your dedication, thank you, Ms. McClure, thanks to everybody else for, for coming in from, from Highland this morning. Thank you. All right. Next up is an additional Act 1240 waiver, and this is the Fordice case.
We have representatives from Fordice School District appearing before the board with petition for waivers for teacher licensure today. Their ninety days expires on August nineteenth, and they are asking for five years. We have Dr. Judy Hubble, the high school principal, incoming superintendent, and Rhonda Lawson, elementary principal and federal programs coordinator, and you will want to swear them in.
Great. Thank you. Those folks from Fordice who plan to speak this afternoon, if you'd raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yeah.
All right. Please continue. Come on up, and, and, Dr. Hubble, right?
Yes, thank you. Yes, I'm the superintendent-elect of the Fordice School District. Ms. Rhonda Lawson is our elementary principal, Nicole McGee is our elementary counselor, and a local minister in the Fordice area. The Fordice School District is located in south-central Arkansas, and it is a little town that has been devastated economically when Georgia Pacific closed down a plywood mill there. It is one of the nineteen counties in the state that is losing the highest percentage of population. We are located in an area where there's little to attract new families for work or leisure activities. The district struggles to find certified teachers from this area. Therefore, the rate of teacher turnover is great due to new teachers commuting into town to take an available job and then moving away as soon as a position closer to home becomes available. Another problem that we have is that the surrounding school districts all pay more than we do, so we really struggle to find certified teachers. In our mission to provide the best education for our students, we recognize that the most important factor in student achievement is the quality of the teacher in the classroom. Our recruiting efforts and hiring have been focused on getting the best and most qualified teachers possible for our students. That challenge has become increasingly more difficult as the numbers of traditionally-trained teachers has declined in our state, and more specifically, our region of the state. Despite the many efforts taken by our district, the need for certified teachers with content knowledge and appropriate licensure to teach the subject area remains great. Therefore, the Fordice School District seeks waiver under Act 1240. As the number of candidates has declined, our district has tried to combat the problem through aggressive recruiting efforts. These efforts include job fairs at SAU and Henderson State Universities, advertisements in the local newspapers, and on the school spring website. The surrounding universities have been very helpful to us in finding teachers, but they're all under alternative certification programs, and there are some, some problems with that. We, we know that salary influences college graduates and where they go to work, and our district began in two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and eighteen school year offering a fifteen-hundred-dollar sign-on bonus. We also give an additional twenty-five-hundred-dollar yearly stipend for critical needs areas of math, science, and special education. Over the past few years, we have increasingly relied on candidates and alternative licensing programs to fill our vacancies. Unfortunately, this is compounding our problem of keeping continuity in our curriculum and impacting the culture of our school. Although we've had some success finding candidates through the Apple and Math programs, often those teachers we have recruited have no ties to our part of the state and leave after their certification requirements are complete. Teachers hired under this waiver would have a plan to seek alternative licensure. The school district believes that we have resources in place to support a teacher with high content knowledge with little educational experience. We have math and literacy specialists through E2E consulting in each building, and they do a tremendous job for us. These specialists bring expertise and content and serve as a resource for teachers on a daily basis in the classroom. Despite the efforts taken by our district, the need for certified teachers with the content knowledge and appropriate licensure to teach in the subject area remains great. We therefore request this Act 1240 waiver regarding teacher licensure for a period of five years, which affords us the ability to fill a vacant position under the guidance of the Arkansas Qualified Teacher Stipulations. And I would also like to add that we are one hundred percent free and reduced lunch. In this past school year, we had to rely on long-term subs for the entire year in a couple of areas. I can't begin to tell you how hard we struggled to find qualified teachers. We have come a long way in the past four years. We have gone from being in academic distress to our high school getting some state rewards money. But to keep going in the right direction, we really need this waiver, and I hope that you all can see fit to grant that to us.
Thank you. Is there any opposition? Ms. McLaughlin? I assume no opposition? Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. I'll see questions, I'll start with Ms. Wright, any questions?
Definitely. Thank you for your presentation, and please know how deeply we empathize with your situation. Obviously, we've considered quite a few of these since my time here on the state board. I, I guess my, my main question to you, as of late, I feel most frequently when we get these waivers, it's when a school district has in mind to hire some specific teachers. Do you all have individuals that you've interviewed that would immediately benefit from this? And if you can kindly come to the mic, I'm sorry, it's for the public record, thank you.
I'm Rhonda Lawson.
Thank you so much.
I'm Rhonda Lawson, Fordice Elementary Principal and Federal Programs Coordinator. Yes, I had two long-term subs last year in my building. This is my first year being principal, last year I had a fourth grade teacher. She has a degree, a general studies degree from a university, and she hadn't gotten in a program, but she's in the ABCTE program right now, but has not finished it, so this waiver would help us be able to hire her, and she worked for us for long-term sub-pay, attended every meeting I asked her to go to, she never missed a day of school. And I have a fifth grade teacher, a literacy teacher, the same thing. So these, it would greatly help us. They have, they're from the community, the fourth grade teacher lives about 15 minutes away, the fifth grade teacher is, she lives in Fordice. So they have ties with the community, and I really believe they would stay.
Fantastic. And then this, this question is, thank you so much, this question is for the superintendent, just wanting to make sure all teachers are aware that you've come forth for this waiver, and no concerns have been expressed by the community?
No.
Teachers or members of your community?
We have really put forth an effort to find local people who have a stake in the community and who want to be there, rather than just finding the school that has the best salary. And we've had some success with that, and it, people who have children in the district, who live in the district, they have family there, they're just going to do a better job for you.
Grow your own.
Yes, that's kind of what we've done. We talked about this at our district and campus leadership meetings. I think that, that really, we've had a lot of community support for it. I feel good about that.
Okay, wonderful, thank you so much.
Ms. Newton?
Other than Sheridan, what are the other districts around you that pull staff?
Pryson, Bearden, Warren, well, Camden, we're in Camden, yes.
Thank you.
We're, we're in one little corner of Dallas County.
Yeah, I know, I know Fordice well, and the Lyon family, so.
Okay.
Anything else? All right. Ms. Jefferson?
I'm sure, you said this, this is a five-year waiver that you're requesting?
We're asking for that, yes, ma'am.
And sometimes our discussions tend towards, tend away from core, courses that we're talking about, this waiver being most applicable to, but given the circumstance you've described, are you assuming and asking that it'd be applied for any subject where you had difficulty finding a certified teacher?
Yes, ma'am, we are. We use Virtual Arkansas quite a lot, but I think there's no substitute for having that hands-on teacher, especially with math and science classes. Just as someone who's been in education for 37, 38 years, I just don't think there's any substitute for the hands-on. And that is not to say we don't appreciate Virtual Arkansas, we use them extensively, they have this waiver, and many of our students are served by them.
Ms. Newton, Ms. Cochran?
I'd love to know how you feel the culture and the climate, and the schools in Fordice are affecting your recruitment and your retention. I'd also like to know how you're utilizing teacher leaders to retain your teachers.
We have a young man who's just been hired as the high school principal. He and the high school counselor go to all the job fairs, they do it on their own, nobody has made them do it, they have a good presentation. We joke all the time about Fordice is the best-kept secret in the state, but it really is a great place to work, and when we get someone who sees what a wonderful place that is to work, we can usually keep them. But many times, these alternative certification people just get a job until they get their certification, then they move on. We have slowed down our turnover quite a bit, but I'd like to slow it down even more, because we need that continuity, we need the kids to know that from year to year. We, we don't need to keep bringing in a bunch of rookies, we need to have stability.
I'd just like to highly recommend taking those teachers that are likely to move on and giving them some sort of a leadership role in the building.
We have done that, yes, and, and I have, I've kind of made it my mantra to let's be positive, let's look at what we have and what we don't, instead of what we don't have. And I guess that's just human nature in a lot of ways, but we have a lot of good things going, and we have made a lot of progress in the last four or five years, but I want us to keep moving in the right direction, and this waiver would help us to do that. And I would appreciate it so much if you all would grant us that.
Additional questions or comments? I would, motions in order?
I move we grant the waiver.
Motion by Ms. Zoak, second by Mr. Black, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? All right, congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Good luck, good luck with your work. Okay, how's everybody doing?
So far, so good.
Okay, okay, we have a series of items regarding the Oceola School District coming up, different, different types.
I am just doing the first one.
All right.
Okay, Oceola School District is here to present a waiver for teacher licensure, and they have several representatives. Their, their topic is teacher licensure, their 90 days expires on August the 29th, and they are requesting only for three years. They do have a board resolution, if you are open to my passing it out to you.
Please.
I will be glad to do that. We have Alfred Hogan, the Assistant Superintendent, Crystal Smith, the STEM Academy Principal, and Chantel Raper, Title I Coordinator, and Tripp Walters, APSRC, will be kicking off the presentation, and you all want to swear all of those in.
Okay. So anyone who's not an attorney, if you'll raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? All right. Ms. Walters?
Thank you, Dr. Barth, members of the board, Commissioner Key. My name is Tripp Walter, I'm a staff attorney with Arkansas Public School Resource Center, and I am proud to be here today assisting the Oceola School District in its request for an Act 1240 waiver, or I should say, group of waivers concerning teacher licensure. I'm going to start off the presentation today, and the main reason for that is, as most of you, if not all of you, may recall, Oceola was part of the group from Crowley's Ridge Educational Service Cooperative last year that asked for these same, same package of waivers. They asked for one year, as did the other co-op members who participated, in the hopes that Act 294 of 2017, which made extensive changes to teacher licensure, would provide them flexibility and relief going forward. And so, and though that has certainly happened, as you may have already seen in the materials we provided and in the PowerPoint, that there is still a very dire and pressing need in Oceola which needs to be addressed and which can't be addressed strictly through the use of licensed teachers. So I just present that as a bit of an overview, if you may be wondering why Oceola's back again, that is why, and hopefully you will see in the materials the severity of the need, and, and Mr. Hogan will address that here in a moment. Would also take a moment to say that Superintendent Michael Cox was unable to be here today. Mr. Hogan is the Assistant Superintendent, and as of July 1st, he will be the Superintendent of the Oceola School District, and in the several years he has already been at the district, he has worked extensively in this area. We are asking for a waiver request of three years, as you will see in the materials. We tried to craft that carefully, not to ask any longer than the folks at Oceola felt was necessary in order to address the needs. I think one thing that hopefully you will notice in the materials and in the, in the PowerPoint, which you, which you have copies of, is I believe Oceola has taken extensive measures to try and handle this themselves, so to speak, without having to come back to you. You will see in the materials the extensive advertising efforts that have taken place, the recruitment efforts, and also the programs that Oceola has taken the initiative to start, including payment of bonuses to try and, much as Fordice said before us, to grow local teachers and bring, keep local teachers in the area, or if they are away, bring them, bring them back home. I would also, and, and Mr. Hogan can speak more to this, in light of Act 294, the district, I think Mr. Hogan in particular, has had discussions with Melissa Jackson, a teacher licensure, and I know those discussions will be ongoing, as to the flexibility that can be provided without the Act 1240 waiver. It's my understanding, and I won't speak for Ms. Jackson, but that she is on board with the waiver, and she understands the reasons why it is still necessary for Oceola to come back here today. And before I turn things over to Mr. Hogan, I would just like to thank very much the assistance of both Ms. Jackson and Kelly McLaughlin, they have been extremely helpful in this process.
Thanks. Thank you, Mr. Hogan.
To the board, Dr. Barth, Commissioner Key. As I stated, my name's Alfred Hogan. We solicit the support of Mr. Walters because of what he stated, we went through the co-op last year, and so we're before you again, although we didn't speak last year, but we're going to speak this year to a short-term requesting the waivers for the Oceola School District. And I personally don't like to talk about the Delta that much, because I'm a product of the Delta, but I'm proud of it, from Wilson, Arkansas, but, and I don't like to talk about the free and reduced lunch and poverty and all, but we have to do the best we can with what we got. So Oceola School District has decided, continues to decide, to do the last five years, because I've been in charge of most of the recruiting and interviewing and hiring staff over the years. So we're just going to run through this real quick, as far as the importance of helping us receive this waiver again. And before I go too far, which is not part of the PowerPoint all the way, we have five teachers in the ALPS program right now, and back in April, we presented a two-and-a-half-hour staff development, myself and Ms. Shan Corbin from Crowley's Ridge Co-op, to train the ones that we, y'all approved last year, that we had on waivers to work in the Oceola School District. And as the, it's, as the superintendent and incoming superintendent, I was a main clog in that, in that workshop, to inform them and tell them the steps we are trying to do to recruit and retain our own. And all these people that we have working under the waiver are local. We have some that may have come from this case, out of the chemical, we have some with a doctorate degree, of course, she came through the AT, ATC program, Ben Brown started that up at Fayetteville a couple of years ago. But we have several in the AT, MAT, the ALPS program, the MAT again, we have some with a doctorate degree, we have two, three with the non, the, the original non-traditional licensure that got back into the fold and trying to work on that. And along with, along that line, we have one with the grace of the commissioner, that it was August, we needed a teacher, and the young man graduated from the, well, it was Memphis State then, his mother is on our board, Ms. Jacqueline Baker, her son was a full-fledged college graduate, had all his credentials and all, but he just wasn't certified to teach. We got permission to use him, he's in the program, and he's still getting certified. He was one of those that I had to talk to as though I was their father, or they, well, I am their boss, but to tell him, if you don't follow these steps with the co-op, and you don't do the things that we're requiring you from the State Department, and it's all in your PowerPoint, if you don't follow the things from the State Department, which is the state board, in a certain length of time, you will be term, you will not be recommended for renewal. I want my staff to be able to know that they are being held accountable, other than the school board and the superintendent and administrators, the principals and Ms. Raper, and the staff at Oceola School District. So that's, that's a little bit on that. But as Mr. Walters explained, we're here for various waivers, and mostly for the recruitment of teachers, and to get teachers, and I stated that, teachers to be in our program. We want the three-year. We will follow all the procedures, like the background check, the test certification, TESS, the training, work toward a licensure, which I just stated. Ms. Raper helps us extensively with the highly qualified certification and AQT and things of this nature. We have various staff members throughout the district that plays important roles with all of us. And I mentioned about all the, yeah, all the requirements, I want to tell you about the Mississippi Delta, and, and I wouldn't be naive to say that I don't like to hear about it, but we have to live with what we have. I'm from Mississippi County, and back in the early 70s, we had a population of over 70,000 people, even though we had the steel mills in Blower and the Big River Steel in Oceola, and the American ingredient card factory in Oceola and all, our population has still dropped to 41,000 people, because of the farm, the high technology in farming, and the farmers have moved, farm laborers have moved off, and things are not in the they used to be. Go to the, yeah, right there. Right now, we're advertising for jobs, and on my sheet, I scratched this out this morning, we got the kindergarten field, we need one first grade, one third grade, two fourth grade, fifth grade, well, we just filled one today, so I can scratch that off, I got an email on the way here. And we, 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 ATC, Arkansas Teacher Corps is on our campus right now, I forgot to tell you that. This is our second year partnering with them from the University of Arkansas Fayetteville. They, we use, they let them use our facilities, in fact, we're using our bus this summer, free of charge transportation, because they have to drive from Jonesboro where they stand in the hotel, they got a better rate in Jonesboro than they could in Oceola, Blower. So we are, and we're feeding them, but ATC, their staff is on our campus right now. In fact, Ms. Smith, you're going to be two this, two this week, but that, that's just the scope of the staff that we need, and we still don't have any applicants on math at the high school, and we're trying real hard. I mean, we've been meeting people in Brinkley, come to Ford City, or go to Memphis if we have to, to sit in a restaurant or somewhere to meet them. They, they finally talked me into using Skype, accepting Skype, not that I don't mind using it, because I FaceTime my grandkids every night, but I'm old-school, like the young lady from Fordice said, 43 years in this business, if I live to see July the 1st, it'll be starting 44, and I still have the passion for it, still love it, and still want to try to do what I can for the need of the students, but Skype is on the horizon, and we've used it this summer doing some interviews, so I'm changing a little bit. Years ago, we used to stay with nothing but the non-traditional teaching licensure, and they, they, they would let a teacher start out with a three-year opportunity, get that started, but then after the end of that three years, that certification wasn't completed and all, people would lose their job. And I commend this board, and Dr. Ola, and the commissioner of the advancements that we are making and trying to help people, just like on the library media, back eight, 12, 14, 15 years ago, when we were just working under that three-year, take that test, and if you don't get it and pass it, Woody Cummings, I had to come to him personally to keep from firing a guy at Christmas. I mean, his wife had just had a baby like in August or September, but as he didn't finish that test before that December deadline, Woody gave him a six-month moratorium to, moratorium to, to get that license, and low and behold, he passed that test before May, and he was able to keep his job. But these are, these are avenues we're trying, we're using these days, or a lot more advanced, and again, I commend you on that. Now, the Jonesboro Sun, the Apple, Spring, Spring School Spring, the Memphis Papers, the Arkansas Democratic's there, the offered, the bonuses we offered, things of this nature, we're doing every opportunity we can to try to recruit, retain, and keep teachers in the Oceola School District. The sign-on bonuses are great, but sometimes if they get certified and get everything, once they get certified, I get a couple of years. and get everything, once they get certified, or get a couple of years under the belt, if Jonesburg call them, or Marion, thirty-five, thirty-eight miles down the road from Oceola, they call them, it's gone. They're gone. But we would very much like this approved if it's to your likings, that we are doing diligently, the best we can to recruit the teachers, and use the, all the rules and regulations that the school district requires on our board, the co-op, and the State Department of Education. Are there any questions?
Thank you, sir.
I know I was talking fast, but I didn't want to bore you.
Thank you, Mr. Hogan. Ms. Cochran, anything?
I was just in Oceola a week ago today, visiting with the Teacher Corps fellows, and I can tell it's a beautiful, vibrant place to live and teach and be a student. I agree wholeheartedly about holding your new, not just your new teachers, but all teachers accountable. I commend you for that. But let's make sure they feel valued and empowered, too. And do you have a teacher cadet program at the high school? I know it's probably tough with the teacher choice.
Yes, and then Community College, ANC, has just phased it out, because they're not receiving students that are wanting to get into teaching the way they want to. And speaking of that, the young lady, we have an ANC campus building on our campus, and the young lady, Ms. Hart, that was in charge of that, had me to come speak to the students twice, fall semester and spring semester, trying to encourage them to get into teaching field.
Ms. Newton? All right. Dr. Hill?
Just appreciate your efforts, as you can see, it's a statewide problem, and trying to use your creativity, reaching out to help, to try to meet the needs of students. I commend your efforts for that.
Thank you.
I commend you for your having summer program, and I know that's hard if you can't find teachers. But I also commend you for, y'all are almost four thousand above the state average in teacher fact, so I would think that that helps as well. You know, I'm torn, because I see that many people who are, have had, not had experience teaching. And your grades are low, and your gaps are wide. So, it's one of those things, when they say you can argue it flat around, you know, the kids aren't going to learn at all if there's not a teacher there. But I, but I am concerned about the, the scores of your schools based on, and can you tell me a little bit what you're doing to address that?
I will let these two young ladies speak more today, because we're working with the Arkansas Leadership Academy a lot, and with the Generation Ready, which are providers for our staff. And they're in the trenches with the academic coaches and the principals more so than I am. I come in at the end of a month, or end of a meeting, and set down the closure and all, but they're in here with the data, and pulling all the records, and making sure that the teachers, that the teachers are using what they're conveying to them to try to work with. But now, turnover has gotten us on a lot of this, while the gap is still there. And like I said earlier, the several that we used last year on the waiver, pretty well all of them are homegrown, because I count Blau fifteen miles away. We have one from Blau, and he's been a good one this year. So, fifteen, and he couldn't get a job, couldn't find a job in Blau at that time, and he been at Oceola for a year. So, I feel we don't, we're going to use that word retention. I think we're going to retain him.
Hi, how are you? My name is Chantel Raper, and I'm Director of Federal Programs and Special Projects with Oceola School District. I guess, in response to your question, you're talking about how are we building capacity with the people that are on these waivers? First, I want to say, as a middle school teacher, I really appreciate the opportunity to see that some of my former students who have graduated from lines with a degree in mathematics, has come back, you know, they've come back to us and said, I want to come back to my community and help, but I didn't take this education pathway. So, as a former teacher, it's, it is rewarding to see my students come back to be teachers in our community. So, as their teacher leaders, we're there to support them, and we're building capacity with them. And another thing is with our Generation Ready providers, they, we are building capacity with our academic coaches. We're fortunate to have a math and literacy academic coach on each campus. So, we do try to make those, build those teacher leaders. I was given the opportunity as a teacher leader, so with these teachers that are on these waivers, we are finding those opportunities for them to serve on committees and work with these academic coaches. So, having generation consultants in the buildings, building capacity with academic coaches, and then in return, those academic coaches building capacity with our teachers. And then, like Ms. Hogan said, having these homegrown people, the people in the community that are coming back to the Delta to help, that's one, one way that we're trying to work with them.
Thank you.
Mr. Prosser?
I'm Crystal Smith, and I'm the principal at Oceola STEM Academy, which is the middle school, all fifth to eighth grade. And I'm going to speak on behalf of being an instructional leader. One of the blessings I think has happened, this is my fourth year at that school, but now all of the principals in the building has been through Master Principal Program, which is our support from Arkansas Leadership Academy. Also, all of our coaches goes to, through the facilitator training. We have had probably five or six teams go through Leadership Team Institute. Also, I've had the pleasure to send six teachers through Teacher Institute. So, we're really trying to align, yes, our vision, but I want to talk a little bit about, because when I looked at that, and some of those positions, actually, my school, and it just, I was just kind of blown away, even though I know the positions that I have open. But then, when I started thinking about transforming teaching and learning, it's really hard to do that, and also have lead, changing and managing leadership, because it's hard for, because I feel like every year I'm rebuilding. And it is good to have homegrown, but actually, I tell people all the time, you're not a, learn how to be a teacher in getting a degree and having a teacher certificate. You become a teacher by going to the classroom and teaching. So, it's really been hard. So, looking at that list, and I started thinking about, I've been in Oceola since two thousand six, two thousand seven, I've seen it transform tremendously. So, looking at that, you'll say, wow, you know, is something going on there? But I've seen the culture turn around. Just, we're not just fortunate enough to have people from the area. Most of the teachers that I hire, they drive an hour or so away. So, a lot of times, we're used as a stepping stone, because a lot of them can't get jobs, because they don't have experience. So, many of mine that I've lost, said they loved it. They wish they could pick up my school and take it where they live. They're just not willing to move to that community. Some of them haven't started having families, you know. So, I just wanted to share that with you, you know, we really are trying. So, thank you.
And I alluded to the fact that, once we get them and they stay a year or two, if Jonesburg call them, or Marion call them, or West Memphis, West Memphis starting salaries right at forty-four, forty-five, I think, and that's a big difference.
Any other questions? I think, if not, we need to see if any, if there is any opposition. Ms. McLaughlin, I don't believe so. Okay.
And as I stated, if we're granted a waiver for the three years, we will work as hard as we did this one year, to try to keep them informed, and staff development, training, or whatever, to obtain a regular license, standard license, and get this thing resolved. Thanks to Mr. Walters, and again, Ms. Boyd, and Ms. Kevin McLaughlin.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there, is there a motion on this waiver request?
I move to grant the waiver request.
Second.
Okay, motion by Ms. Chambers, second by Dr. Hill. I just, I always want to comment, and it picks up in some ways on, on Mrs. X's comment. I mean, I, I am so sympathetic to these districts that lack folks in the community are willing to come into the district. But I think we also need to do everything we can to elevate the prestige of the profession. And I just worry deeply about waiving away that. And so, I'm, you know, it's nothing about this district, and I'm deeply sympathetic to the challenges it and other districts face, but I, but I, I worry deeply about that, and the signals it may send to folks who are in the profession now, but folks who are looking to come into the profession longer term.
Couple, two things I want. One, as we, as we try to process this, I think my question would be, you know, what are our alternatives? And then, secondly, as we sit here and review these, you know, waivers, as we do sometime charters, I guess I want to ask Commissioner, is there not any reason to think about a waiver review committee? Because, because, I mean...
I take that as a, you're volunteering.
Well, I mean, I'm just, but I mean, but you, I mean, because of process, that, because we're just getting them, as we look at the information, but I, it should, I think to his point, maybe it can give more detail of us just seeing it, say, yes, no, or to be able to analyze. Just something, as a, some consideration.
Well, and I think there is, there is considerable review of, of the waivers within the department. We have the charter unit that reviews those, they consult with Dr. O's unit, and, you know, when it's appropriate, they consult with standards. I think they always consult with standards on it. And, which, as a matter of fact, I'll tomorrow, fill you in on some of the moving around that we're doing within the department to better align some of the review processes. So, yeah, that happens. And, you know, that's why we try to get it out to you early enough, so that if there are questions about some of the details, there's a chance to, you know, dig a little deeper if we need to.
Yeah.
But I, so, but I, I think part of what we are dealing with, Mr. Hogan mentioned a few years ago, and the policy that we had, that if you didn't pass that test, get your license in three years, you were out. That was, that was very short-sighted. I mean, there was a reason that we did that, the department did that at the time, but we're still suffering the, the impact from that. There are educators who would have been great educators today, but for that three-year timeframe, and then we went out, that's, if you remember, we, we had our, one of our campaigns was to try to get some of those folks back in. Well, what, what we are seeing now, and I know that, it's something we talk about a lot, is that decline that we were seeing for several years, in the number of people coming into the profession, going into the preparation programs. And it takes four to five years on that, on that traditional route to see that. And so, we're in a, kind of a trough right now. I think what you're going to see over the next five years, is that those numbers start to pick back up. There will be less need for these waivers. And so, I think that three-to-five-year period that we are looking at right now, we are approving many of these waivers, it, it's temporary. It was always meant to be temporary. It was never meant to replace that traditional prep program philosophy with Teach for America, Arkansas Teacher Corps, any of those things. It's good that they're there. I think the work that we are all doing together is, is really going to start showing the, the increase in the evidence, and it's going to get easier to fill these positions. And in three to five years, they'll come back and say, we don't need that waiver anymore. I mean, that, that's what we're working for. And it's a, there's a lot of lead time, and it's hard to really put, put hard figures to that, but that's kind of what we're working with in the department.
And I've recognized that, and I think when you look at the alternative, as we've seen over the last two years, I've been on the board, is that it's either we grant this with that strategic plan that you all have, or we have long-term substitutes. And right now, this is the best plan until that happens. And so, that's why I'm saying, I mean, why would we sit here and say we don't agree with the waiver, when we know what's, what's, what happened with, if we don't grant it, then we're not improving the situation? I mean, so it's just rational to me, even though I, I respect Dr. Barth's concern about, you know, going to school and, and, and not lessening the profession. But I think when you're considering the alternative, is, is, is there something better? And to me, as I've sit here for two years, and we've gone through the waiver process, and as a parent, do I want somebody who's going through the program, with the principal, with the Teacher Academy, who's being trained, who's, who's being mentored, or do I want a long-term substitute? To me, it's a no-brainer. Now, that's just my personal experiences, and knowing what they're trying to do. And I, I think everybody's out there trying to recruit, retain, educate, nurture. All, I keep hearing those words, over and over and over. So, I, I mean, I empathize with it, you know, and applaud, you know, what's going on, because I've been through those areas. And I know Ms. Baker very well. I recruited her son. I mean, I, I know, I know her, I recruited her son. I know what he, who you working with, and I'm proud to see him go into the classroom. He's a great, you know, hats off to you. That's why I said that, because I know what you're doing, because he wasn't originally going to be a teacher.
Yeah. And, and, you know, Mr. Hogan, you mentioned the ANC dropping the, I would encourage to your colleges to rethink that, because once they drop it, it's, it's hard to get, you know, to ramp those things back up. And if we are as successful as we expect that we will be with respect to teacher cadets, the orientation of teaching programs, all educators rising, they're going to get student inquiries one of these days, and they're going to wonder, where do all these kids come from? And, and why did we make that decision? So, that's where the, that stakeholder engagement at the local level is so critical, and, and that, that all of the higher-ed institutions understand, don't make short-term decisions when others are working on long-term solutions, that, that their short-term decisions might hinder down the road.
Yeah, and that's, I agree. It's, it's, it's a, it's a deeply rational way to go in the short term. I just, I just, I do worry about if there are long-term ramifications in terms of sending signals about the value of the profession.
I just, I find myself literally caught between the two of you, but, but also philosophically, I do look forward to, I look forward to, Commissioner, what you just said, that all these good things are going to really start to show up in our numbers, in the certified teachers that we have out there. I don't know what is, what accrues to us to compel the districts. Maybe it's just the ADE puts together reports, so over time, we can see, because there'll be, we've seen a pretty big wave in the past two years of waiver requests. And so, they're going to, they're going to come back on the calendar here at some point in the next two, three, four years. And you'd love to see that those numbers have actually started to change. And so, I hope that's something from a due diligence perspective, we can do for ourselves, to see that that is indeed improving.
Yeah, we can do that. All right. I think we're ready for a motion on this.
I move.
Yeah, we have a motion, and a second motion by Ms. Chambers, and a second by Dr. Hill.
Starting us down a bad path, and I apologize. All those in favor of the motion to accept the waiver?
Aye.
Pose same side. All right.
I was going to say to the superintendent, having sat through many classes with Dr. Cummins, he learned to give compassion, because he got a lot of it.
All right. I think we need a five-minute break before we transition to, thank you. All right, I think we need a five-minute break before we transition to, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, Commissioner's on his, on his way back. We are down now to conversion charter amendment from OCLA STEM Academy, and I'll turn it over to Dr. Boyd.
Thank you, Dr. Barr. Alexandra Boyd, Director of Charter Schools. This is a decision that's made by, that has been made by the Charter Authorizing Panel, it was made on May 16th. As a reminder, the motions for my items today are to review or not review. So, on May 20, I mean, on May 16th, 2018, representatives of the OCLA STEM Academy appeared before the Charter Authorizing Panel requesting amendment to their charter. It was approved by a unanimous vote. No formal request for review from the State Board has been made, but you shouldn't, you can make one if you would like, if you so choose. Representatives from OCLA are here if you have questions about this item.
Any, any comments or questions over here? Ms. Hook or Ms. Reif? Either of you? Are they good? They may have some technology issues up here.
I don't have any questions on this item.
Okay, all right. All right, now, so y'all understand the, the proper motion to review or not to review?
I move not to review.
Further discussion? Motion by Ms. Newton, second by Ms. Chambers. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose the same sign. All right, great. And our final OCLA issue is request for waivers, standards of accreditation, so a different issue.
That's correct. Jennifer Davis, Staff Attorney for the Department, and we would actually request it to pull this item, because the item you just chose not to review would alleviate their need for an appeal. Additionally, with your permission, we would like to replace the attachment, which is the final accreditation report, for item number 14. Currently, it has OCLA listed as having a probationary issue, but with your approval on the last item, it no longer has a probationary issue, and so, with your approval, before you get to that item, we would like to replace that attachment, so it would reflect the current accreditation status.
Great. Thanks. Okay, so, we're ready to move, move on from, from that issue. And so, thank you for the people from OCLA, and safe travels back, back, back home. This means we are now down to another series of author, of Charter Authorizing Panel decisions, and first up is the Polk County Virtual Academy issue.
Thank you, Dr. Barr. On May 16th, the Polk County Virtual Academy asked for an amendment request, the panel voted it, approved it with a unanimous vote, no request for review has been made. I believe we have a representative on the phone from Polk County, should you have questions?
All right. Ms. Reif? Or Ms. Hook? Either, any questions here?
No, this is just a change of address.
Okay. Any questions on this side? Do y'all understand the proper motion to review or not to review?
I move not to review.
A second.
Motion by Ms. Reif, second by Mr. Black, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose the same sign. Okay, now down to the Arkansas Arts Academy.
The Arkansas Arts Academy requested an amendment to its charter on May 16th, it was approved by a unanimous vote from the panel, no request for review have been made, and we should have representatives on the phone from Arkansas Arts Academy if you have questions.
Okay. Any questions on the side? Ms. Reif, Ms. Hook?
This is still one of those media specialist cleanups, is that right?
That's correct.
I move not to review.
Motion by Ms. Reif, second by Ms. Chambers, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose the same sign. Okay, and that gets us down to Friendship Aspire Academy.
Thank you, Dr. Barr. Friendship Aspire Academy Little Rock requested an amendment to their charter by unanimous vote, the panel approved the request, and there has been a request for a formal review made by Superintendent Poor. So, I'll have Jennifer Davis come and talk to you about the procedures for considering that review.
Thank you.
Okay, may I ask a question on your way up? It was my understanding from the letter that was included in this and the letters from, to the other people, that a request for review had to come from an opposing person by the eighth, according to your letter that you sent? And I got mine this morning, so can you help clear that up for the audience and for the viewing public?
Yes, ma'am. We perhaps should add a clause to our letter and our discussion. There is nothing in the law or the rules that says it has to be in by a certain time. I put in a time so that I can try to give you the information and try to get it on the public agenda. And so, while I request that, there's nothing in law and rule that says it has to happen by a certain time.
Are there things that we request on both sides that aren't in law that we do for the convenience of the board study?
There are things even like for a school choice appeal, somebody can show up with documentation that is not included in the agenda and present it to you as well. So, that does happen by practice, we have dates in which that we need to get the agenda posted, so that's usually the date in which we say that it has to be. The rules themselves do say that it has to be a written request in writing, it does not have a date on it, but also, somebody could show up today and voice a request for review as well. So, that's why there's no deadline for making that request, because somebody could show up with public comment today.
Thank you.
So, you want to walk us through the procedure?
Sure, now, our rules do say that if there is a request for a review, it can come from any number of people, and the person requesting the review has three minutes to tell you the reasons for why they're requesting a review. Anybody that isn't opposed to the review has three minutes as well, and then the party requesting the review has one minute. Of course, any of that time, as the chair, you do have the discretion to extend that or offer more time, but it is a three-minute, three-minute, one-minute rebuttal.
Okay, so, and then the person requesting the review goes first?
That's correct.
Okay. And then, we do have some requests for public comment on this item, and so, that would come after that, that's, that three-minute, three-minute, one-minute?
After the formal request for the review, you would have discussion, and then prior to your vote, after discussion is when the public comment comes in, after you have done your discussion right before a vote.
Okay, great, thank you very much. Then, Mr. Poor is up for three minutes, correct? Ms. Boyd?
Yes, that's correct.
Dr. Boyd, I apologize, I'm getting used to it.
Okay, I will begin. I think that one of the things that you, my reason for request is that the state has a symmetry in terms of giving consideration of how schools begin, and how you set up the structure to make sure that everything is done in a way that, that creates a timing for all parties. That includes the charter that is seeking to come into place, that includes the school district, that includes the parents that are potentially able to come in. And so, that sequence sets it up so that, you know, there's an approval in the fall, and then there's time for the charter to go do its work, to establish itself, to recruit, to get teacher recruitment, student recruitment, and then actually start to deal with programming. It allows then also the school district that's impacted to have a reality in terms of its budget. For Little Rock School District specifically on this particular issue, we knew in the fall that there was the potential of us losing as many as 360 students with the approval of two charters that took place in the fall. When the charter backed out from the New Orleans group, that then, in our mind, cut in half the risk of where we were. We then moved forward in April and May, which is pretty typical and standard for schools, to start to move forward on its staffing as well as its, as its programming. If you think about just today, with the Elkins example, of the discussion that occurred with one student, okay, and the impact it can have on budget, especially if it's a severe needs child in terms of how you look at these things. So, you know, we have in place and have an idea of how we're going to staff our buildings, and we've established that, and probably don't need to remind all of you, this is in the middle of a $5 million budget reduction just this year, at a $41 million budget reduction over the last three or four years. So, the loss of students, it does have an impact. The other thing that you look at is parents have options and opportunities, and really, we do a great job throughout this state, I think, of selling what we're able to do for parents so that they can make their choice. But typically, those choices are made, and the windows of opportunity are all done prior to June 1, in terms of, you know, who's going to go where. The final thing is serving students. You know, if you look at this and, and just start to think of, we don't know right now what the Aspire Charter School has in terms of its exact numbers, at least I am not privy to that. And so, if you look at it and you start to think of how many grades per grade level, you also have to start to think about the sequencing then of how that school moves forward, but you also need to look at the individual delivery for that year in terms of special needs children, and whether or not there's the programming set to serve those young people. The last comment that I'll make, and I'm sure my time is very close to being done, is that I, I do think that, you know, the waiver that this was established to allow to happen. is that I do think that, you know, the waiver that this was established to allow to happen makes sense. There's a lot of waivers that have come to you today. But when you talk about a waiver to allow a school to jump in and actually start a whole year earlier, that probably is something that deserves a lot deeper thinking than just the issue in front of you today. And I just plant that seed.
Thank you, Mr. Poor. All right, so, Ms. Boyd, or Dr. Boyd? It's getting late in the day, I apologize.
From Friendship, we have Joe Harris, and I'm gonna get it backwards, Fong Tran.
Great, all right. And no, no, no testimony on this, no, I don't need to swear at any of these parties, I apologize. Okay. Mr. Harris?
I'd like to thank this body for inviting us today. And in response to Superintendent Poor's appeal to this body, which we received under such short notice as many of you have, we'd like to just take a few minutes and talk about some of the points that he hit on. We were approved on May sixteenth to open the school by the panel. That's the recommendation for review that is before us today. It was at that time, it was determined that we had the capacity, the resource, and experience to open our school a year earlier. This body, more than a year ago, granted us two charters. One to open up a school in Pine Bluff this year, and then the other to open the Little Rock School in the following year. We made an appeal to open up our Little Rock School a year earlier. We asked for that request as a result of the fact of two factors. One, the Einstein School that was going to occupy the Garland School pulled out. And then, second, having to do with the fact that this created a facility that we would be able to open up and open a school this year. The reason we asked for a staggered opening in our first application was because of the facility. That issue of the facility was addressed as a result of Einstein pulling out. So we now have a school in Little Rock. We have the capacity and the experience. Superintendent Poor, and I just gave you guys a handout, talked about our capacity and experience. And there are a number of things I wanted to just quickly point out. And what we've done in just the last three short weeks to ensure that our school opens up on time in Little Rock. To my right, you see Lauren Chapman. Laura Chapman is our new principal at Garland, Friendship Garland. We're really proud to have her. Principal Chapman comes with over twenty years' experience. She also just moved to Little Rock, so she will be a resident of Little Rock. Her and her family moved here. To date, we've hired, or at least identified, and intend on hiring six student, I'm sorry, seven teachers, one of which is our sped teacher. We have two kindergarten first, two first graders, and one para already identified. Of the seven teachers or staff, we've identified six are residents of Little Rock. We've already begun aggressive student recruitment efforts. So two weeks, we yielded seventeen student applications. We've done a number of radio ads that, I don't know if you guys have heard them, but they're running all over. We've run them on urban stations, the religious, and then our Spanish-speaking radio station. We put in place an on-the-ground team that has reached over three hundred people in just two weeks. We're excited about the opportunity that we have, and we're confident that we will have the ability and the capacity to open up our school in Little Rock. We've already hit the ground running. We'd like for this body to just follow through on the commitment that the charter panel made in its recommendation to approve us to move forward.
Thank you, sir. And Mr. Poor has one minute, correct? Okay.
In the letter that was addressed to the commissioner and Mr. Barth and Ms. Boyd that I submitted last night, one of the things that I mentioned was that the, you know, the, if you go back and look at the Friendship Aspire Academy's approach to say they wanted to start off in Pine Bluff with intentionality to have a start into the state, because they are new into our state, that that was a part of their thing. They, at that time, they did not mention that it was because they didn't have a building. They said they were gonna be looking for a building over the course of this coming year to join and serve students in the southwest part of the city. The state board approved, and the charter panel at that time approved, the school to open up for the following year. So I, I think that that is a, an element of just, if we go back and look at, you know, what the sequence of what was delivered and what was said as the intention, which was to go serve the students of southwest Little Rock, that was a critical component of what they said they wanted to go do. And said that that's where they thought there was a need. So, the big deal for me, though, is timing. That, I think, supersedes everything in terms of how we go and establish our staffing and our budgets and our ability to go serve kids, especially with special programs, whether that's ESL, sped, or anything else.
Thank you, sir. Okay, and so that's, that concludes the, the formal presentations. So next up would be any questions from board members. But before we make a motion, we would move to, no, Ms. Davis is tallying me down.
No, I'm sorry. No, that would be correct. But I do understand that there are other individuals in here who might not want to wait until your decision. So if, you know, Senator Elliott would like to make her comments now, then you can grant that deference to her.
Okay, okay. She's, you're, you're good to wait? Okay, all right. Okay, great. Okay, so now would be the, the time for, for any questions of either party.
Yeah, I would just like to remind everyone that the questions are to get to the decision to review or not review. And we want to avoid holding another hearing.
Exactly, all right. And that was, you read my mind. Again, the conversation today is not about the, the merits of the case itself. It is really the question of whether it is appropriate for a full review in, in the, I guess it could happen at any time, but no later than the, the July meeting of the board. Correct? All right. Okay, so I'll start over here, Ms. Cochran, questions? Ms. Newton?
No, no questions.
Okay.
Yeah, when we said view, so if, if it was to be reviewed, when would that take place? I mean, that's, that was.
So the law states that it needs to be either at your next scheduled meeting or a special meeting held before then, whichever one happens first. We review the open meeting laws in preparation for this. And you could review it as early as tomorrow, whether this, if you do a review, it'll need to be sometime between tomorrow and your next, or at your next regularly scheduled board meeting.
This one?
All, all mine would be review questions, not, not specific questions.
Okay.
I do have one question for Ms. Boyd. And I apologize that I didn't get a chance to review the video or attend the session. And I couldn't discern from the documents sent. To what extent was this issue of timing, was that raised in the discussion of the Charter Authorizing Board?
Yes, several panel members asked questions about the capacity of the charter to be able to open in August. And those questions, looking at the vote, seemed to be answered to their satisfaction.
Thank you, and actually, my question, I apologize, I wasn't more precise. But the question of the impact in regards to the timing to Little Rock School District. So that, because they're also having a short window of turnaround in terms of, they've already made hiring decisions, staffing decisions, based on their assumption in regards to charter seats for this coming school year. And this does have an impact. Was that raised or just part of the conversation?
I do remember it being a consideration. Ms. Davis, you have more?
No, no, go ahead.
Yeah. I, I do remember it being a consideration. And I, I think that's really all I can say was, you know.
That it was at some point raised, okay. But that, what was this specific letter concern raised at that time? The letter that Dr. Poor sent?
No, but he did come and voice opposition at the meeting.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, any further questions? Then a motion, I guess, would be in order to accept public comment on this item.
I move to accept public comment.
All right. Okay.
So you'll have to move to, if they might want to just?
Okay, we're good. So we can move directly to public comment, up to three minutes would be our normal. And first person I have is Vic Snyder, Congressman Snyder. If you will, three minutes.
Good afternoon. I appreciate you taking public comment this afternoon. My name is Vic Snyder. I come here today as a parent with four children in the Little Rock School District, three going into fourth grade and one going into seventh. All are at Forest Heights STEM Academy. And I'm sure that some of you are looking at me saying, surely he meant grandparent. No, I have indeed four, I will say, always delightful little boys since you didn't put me under oath. My wife and I have been very pleased with our four years at Forest Heights and are very appreciative of our principal, Ms. Amy Cooper, her team, and her dream for public education. Forest Heights received an A and even some extra money. But as I spent some time on the Department of Education website, looking at the scores from other schools around Little Rock and around the state, the data clearly shows great variability, school to school, in socioeconomic status, race, English language proficiency, and special ed students. How our community and our state should respond to this variability is a very important, ongoing topic, but today's agenda item is a much more limited one. Should this process be rushed to allow a new charter school to begin a year earlier than originally planned? And in my opinion, the process should not be rushed, and there should be review. The time is short to be ready for a new school year. As this new school tries to get ready, and I'm sure they will work with great dedication, three results can occur. First, they are successful and are able to recruit and put a team together prepared for all students. Or, second, they are unsuccessful and special ed kids and special need kids don't get the services they deserve. Or, third, they are unsuccessful and parents with special ed kids figure this out and do not send their children to this school, with the result being a higher concentration of kids with challenges in the current schools, but with less money for Superintendent Poor and his team to meet their needs. I don't know what schools in Little Rock will look like in five or ten years, but in fairness to this community and all our children, I encourage you not to circumvent the normal process, which allows preparation both for the new school but also for our local district. Thank you all.
Thank you, sir. Next up, Senator Elliott?
Thank you, and good afternoon, board. It's been a while since I've seen you. I've missed you. I'm sure the feeling is mutual. I am happy I was able to come today, because I, I'm, I'm not gonna pretend to you that I am for this school even being located in our neighborhood. That's, so I'm not trying to pull the wool over anybody's eyes. So sticking to the issue at hand, I do have real concerns about the school opening on such a short notice. Because as a school teacher, I know we started planning even when we were in the throes of having a method for starting school from year to year. We started very seriously in February, because, because we knew what we were gonna do. We knew what was required. We had even gone to the extent of making sure every teacher by May one knew whether or not you were going to be rehired. And I think something else that's an overriding consideration for me. I sat here and listened today to many folks who were really from areas that are very, that are struggling. And we have to make waivers time and time again, which makes me question sometimes, you know, what are those kids getting? And it's not to say folks aren't doing their best, but here we have an option. This is not something we have to do in a hurry-up way to a community that is already struggling. We don't have to do that in this case. And what it feels to me like in some ways, we are, we are giving parents an option here at the expense of whether or not we are really prepared to give them an option. And I totally accept that that's what we want to do, is give them an option. But it should be an option, I think, that is respectful of the fact that this community is already struggling, trying to figure out how to make many things work. And in the middle of that, we're gonna throw something elsewhere I would suggest to you we are not prepared to do. The most we can do, I think, or the very least maybe, we can do is at least be prepared for this. Because if we are not, we are taking chances with our kids' lives. And that is not something we should do. There is a reason, there is a reason that all of this time was necessary to be prepared. That's why it was, it was going to be another year off. So if you're preparing for a school in Pine Bluff, but you're also prepared for one in Little Rock that you are not going to open, that doesn't fall well with me for our community, for our kids, and for our parents. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you. And finally, Sam Ledbetter. Good to see you, long time no see.
I know everyone's thinking you were done with me this morning, but you're not. My name's Sam Ledbetter, and I ask that you vote to review the Charter Authorizing Panel's decision to allow Friendship Aspire Academy Charter School to move up its open date by one year. There's a process for approval of charters that is fair to both the charter schools and the districts the charter schools are allowed to operate in. Departing from the process, in my view, is unfair to both the charter school and the local district. It's unfair to the charter school because it has to ramp up without sufficient time to meet the commitments under its charter, including providing services to children with special needs. The charter for this school promises to serve students in special education. I cannot imagine that it can do that, given the timeframes that it's now trying to operate under. A review will allow you to at least determine that the charter school is truly in a position to fulfill the commitments to special education and all the other commitments that it's made in its application materials in such a short timeframe. The charter school's application stated it would begin with one hundred and sixty students. It's hard for me to envision how it will meet this enrollment goal this late in the process when most families have already made decisions for the upcoming school year that begins in approximately sixty days. Families make their plans for this coming school years in advance, and making this late change is not conducive to stability or sound decision-making. But if parents decide that they, that they will send their children to this school, then in my view, it's unfair to Little Rock School District for the reasons that Mr. Poor has already outlined. He's made his staffing decisions on the belief that this, that this charter school would not begin this year, but would begin operation the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen school year. If this charter is allowed to replace Einstein, the district will lose students, but it is prohibited by law from making staffing adjustments to compensate for the last-minute enrollment loss. And of course, Dr., or Ms. Poor's already told you, they're, they're in this declining enrollment, loss of funding situation, and it just, it's, it's more burden on the Little Rock School District. So you may be thinking, well, okay, if we review, we just compound these problems. But that underscores the very reason not to rush the process. If there's not sufficient time for the state board to assure itself and the public that this charter school is in a position to successfully move its opening up for a year, doesn't that tell you that we're being in a rush? We're rushing it. Finally, and I hesitate to say it, but I'm gonna say it anyway, there's a perception that the Little Rock School District has become the punching bag for the state. Whether or not it's your intent, it's certainly the perception that exists in my community. And of course, I, I was on the board, I voted for state takeover. So I ask that you vote to review the panel's decision to allow the Friendship Aspire Charter to open one year early and follow the process that specifies timeframes for charter approval and commencement. There are reasons for the timeframes. They give all parties an opportunity to plan and prepare. The decision that ends up rushing this process undermines, undermines the rationale behind them. And thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Ledbetter. All right, we've heard public comment. Now it is time for our own comment in advance of a motion. Any comments?
I certainly appreciate all the perspectives that we've heard. I start off by saying I certainly respect the Charter Authorizing Panel. But I have to admit, I have questions about whether there are rules or not. This timeline seems so compressed, and they must have taken that into consideration. But in, in terms of, again, signaling, I, I think we need to review it. I think when we review it, that sends a, all the things that we've been talking about timeline are further compressed. So it definitely sends a message, I think, to families and to the community that the school very possibly may not open. And so I, I want to be very thoughtful about what it means to vote for a review, even if we were to do one quickly with a special meeting. I, I, I don't, I, I have concerns about the school being able to gear up fast enough, that's one issue. But I also want, back to Little Rock and what's fair, they are in a position, given how late this is occurring, in their own staffing and the expenses associated with that. And again, I'm assuming that the channel, the Charter Panel took all this into consideration. But I'd also, longer term, and we've talked about this- term, and we've talked about this before, but this certainly puts, underscores, we continue to see compression in Little Rock, and I do think we need a broader thoughtful plan about, I love the rigor that we bring to individual charter review, but I think it's really time, given how many charters are in the, in the district now, that we're looking at a more comprehensive plan about where students are, where the allocation of dollars are going, so that as we approve these very thoughtful and good charter applications, it's in context of where the money and the students and the families are.
Any other comments?
No, I concur with everything that Ms. Chambers so eloquently said, and to say that where, as much as I was ready to step away from this board, if this board wanted to do a special meeting, I would, even, I would show up. No, but I also, for the gravity of the situation, and please know I'm sensitive, and obviously know the effort that you all have put into thinking about your recruiting process and as well as the district, this needs to get resolved sooner versus later. So, I do think it's incumbent on us that, personally, I'm ready, if Ms. Chambers isn't, for a motion for review, but I do think we need to already set a date so that everyone feels confident, and I do think we need to think sooner versus later.
I think also, we need to, even if we hear it tomorrow, we need to be sure that if we do vote to review, that we give them very specific things to address, because you can't just, you know, hold, you know, I had several questions that were not addressed at the charter panel meeting. And I guess with my experience with a charter that from a great organization, KIP, when they opened quickly in Forest City, and a charter that opened quickly in West Little Rock, and we saw that without the right staff and with the right principal and the short notice, that those did not go well until the second and third year. And for all transparency, I did vote against a two-year-out approval at the time, because I think we needed to see if they could do what they promised. And so, for that reason, I guess I'm signaling the way I'm leaning, but I do think if we're going to review, we need to do it very quickly, in all fairness to all concerned.
All right. If there are no further comments, I would entertain a motion.
Second.
Motion to review by Ms. Chambers, second by Ms. Rye. Why don't we do a quick roll call on this?
Okay. Ms. Rye.
Yes.
Ms. Zook.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Dr. Hill.
Yes.
Ms. Newton.
Yes.
Mr. Black.
Yes.
Six yeas.
Okay. All right, our, just to, who has our, our meetings law undermined? Ms. Davis, do you, can you tell us what our requirements are in terms of public notice in advance of a meeting?
I believe for a special board meeting, it's two hours notice that we would have to give. So, I mean, we could stay till midnight, but, you know.
I think.
But I believe it's a two-hour notice that you have to give for.
Okay.
If I could suggest identifying the specific questions.
Yes.
Yes.
And then, Dr. Boyd, taking those questions, getting with the respective parties, and asking them when is the earliest they could be ready. And if that is tomorrow, then that's an option. If it's not tomorrow, then they can tell us what is workable for them, and if, with your permission to do that.
Okay. All right. Are folks ready, or do you need a little time to pull those, those issues together? Okay. Ms. Rye, what questions you would like responses to?
No, I'd like some more information from actually the Little Rock School District in regards to the specific implications in regards, in regards to staffing, allocation of students, plans that you had made in this regards.
Ms. Zook.
I have a list if they want to, if somebody's helping her take notes. In the charter panel meeting, they did a comparison which did not show Little Rock in a favorable side with old information, but the only information that was available at the time for 16, 17 scores, and they, for the third through fifth grade, and they're only going to open kindergarten first. So, I'd like to see the comparison of the kindergarten and first scores to the Little Rock School District. I'd also like to know what their plans are with regard to special education, as far as occupational therapy, physical therapy, speech therapy, AIDS, those kinds of things, and if they have people who are trained and up and ready to be their dyslexia specialist, if they have PD planned where they can do the summer in the science of reading, will they immediately provide transportation, what about the meal service, will there be an in-house lunchroom, and how wide, if they're providing transportation, how wide a circle? I noticed they had made points about the families they have contacted. I wanted to know if that's families just within the Little Rock School District, or if it gets into Pulaski County, Bryant, Benton, North Little Rock, and the parents who may be already be in other charters. And also on the budgeting, because we just, the charter panel, which if we agree, is, is closing Rock Bridge for about the same number of students that this school is saying they're going to serve, and they are closed because they said they could not be financially viable. I did notice in the paperwork we were given that the Walton Family Foundation is going to loan or give them a million too, which, you know, obviously would be very helpful, but I'd like to know if that's a one-year thing, a loan, or a several-year thing. I think that's all.
Oh, I'll add to, actually, a little more specificity on the budgeting piece in terms of assuming a student body that's at several size levels, half, half what was expected, maybe three, four, and then, and then the expected amount in terms of, in terms of budget. I'd like a little more specificity about, about building timelines, in terms of exactly when they can expect to be able to, to not just, to begin preparation within the building, because I know it's not yet complete, but when could they actually begin to move desks in and things that would get the building in place? Similar to Ms. Zook's questions about special education, I would add similar questions related to English learning, language learners, and preparation for those students. And then finally, I would really like an articulation of why the shift away from Southwest Little Rock, which was such an important part of the original proposal, how is, how does this location meet that original mission, and if not, why the change in, in, in commitment to a neighborhood?
I too would just like for you to give us the basic information that he lined out for you, and we reach a decision from that as soon as we can.
Thank you. I think it's inherent in these more detailed questions, but we'd like to hear back even from the charter panel in terms of process. Why, other than the fact that a facility became available, why did we think at this late date, this was going to be a good approach in terms of the approval process?
I think they addressed that, and there's why they voted the way they did. Did you need more than that?
It just, it just seems like such a short timeframe to stand up a school.
We typically have not had members of the charter panel come and testify before you, and so that's why you have the documents that they have notated how they have voted. There's also the transcript that we can email out to you, so that way you may see questions that were asked, and what was, you know, sent back. There's also the live stream video in your spare time, if you'd like to watch that. But we typically have not had those members come before you, and I will say also that, you know, not all of those members are even department employees, and so we can't necessarily compel them to come here. And so, we typically have not had them do that. But you do have a Google Doc, and, you know, that should state their reasons for why they felt that opening a year earlier was sufficient.
Do we have any specific dates in terms of, we have so many dates and deadlines, and for very good reasons, back off schedules. Are there any dates we try to adhere to relative to when a school is given approval to open?
Yes.
Prior to, and what are, those are the dates I'm looking for, because again, this seems late just practically, even if there isn't anything in policy.
Sure. We don't necessarily, I mean, you know, our charter panel hears applications on a certain cycle that we feel gives the schools time to set them up. I believe this one, the amendment, because the charter panel, and by your vote of choosing not to review their original application, it felt that there was a sufficiency in their application to begin with, and that if I remember correctly, but it's been a year, but if I remember correctly, the application was partially approved, and they made the decision to have a one-year planning, which we can't allow them to do, even though it doesn't extend their contract, because those students in the Southwest Little Rock area were already being served by the approval of another charter. But because that charter had decided fairly recently, I don't remember what the date was, but fairly recently, to no longer serve those children, they decided to go ahead, so that way those children would be served. So, you know, they kind of, they made the decision to wait, to allow the other charter, but since that one's not there, they're choosing to come back for that.
But to answer what I think she's asking is, yes, October, November is the calendar time for charter approval.
Right.
Not June and May.
That's, right.
Dig a little deeper, though, on the, why this is different, because it's an amendment.
That's correct.
And the amendment process for charters does not follow the same date requirements as the original approval of a charter.
Right. I mean, we, you, you approved OCLO's amendment that they had at the same time. So, there are lots of amendments. There was Polk County who had a location change and things of that nature, so the amendments do happen throughout the year, and they don't follow the same schedule. But again, that application had already been approved based on the sufficiency of that application.
That just helps explain how we got here. Thank you. I don't have any other questions.
Dr. Hill.
Then I hear her ask about the budget for Little Rock School District, how that would, did you, be affected?
Yes.
That's, okay, I thought that was when I wanted to make sure, what the planning that went ahead, that the superintendent had planned for, and how that would be affected.
Ms. Zook and Dr. Barth got most of my questions. I just had one more. It was on staff and personnel. I would like more specifics, not just numbers of staff that are hired, but specifics on their qualifications, are any of them going to need waivers, you know, what, what specifically is the background of our teachers, okay, and staff?
From Friendship?
Yes.
And I can tell you, in the application, they did request a waiver from teacher licenses.
But could I get on the ones that I've actually hired?
Yeah.
Ms. Cocker. Okay. All right. Anything else that you may have thought of? Okay, that's a good list. Okay.
Okay. And Ms. Davis, clarify for me the scope of the review. I'm just, since we don't do this often, and it's still relatively new, is it limited to the questions that they've asked today, or is, or can it be broader? And I would just, I just want to make sure that we ask that and answer that while everyone's here, so that there won't be any confusion at whatever time the special meeting occurs.
Sure. So, the amendment that you have voted to review will be heard as if the charter panel had not heard it already and made a decision. So, while you have made the suggestions of additional information that you would like to see in order to make a decision, they can bring additional information. I wouldn't advise them not to address your questions, but they could choose to do so, much like any other amendment. It would be as if the charter panel decision had not been made. So, they can ask other things, but I would caution you that because this one is, it is different a little bit, that the, that the, the scope is limited to the amendment to allow them to operate earlier, not to operate at all, because you have already approved for them to operate. So, I would just be, I can see that it, it can get muddled a little bit. So, it would just be to approve the amendment to open earlier.
And Ms., Dr. Boyd, could you also, this won't be a need for you to walk, could you also let us know the number of openings in kindergarten and first grade from the other charters, in case we have parents who choose to go to charter, and if they don't go to charter, they will either homeschool or private school, or, so, do we have openings in kindergarten and first grade in other charters?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, so, we will, hopefully, we, before we leave today or by tomorrow, we'll figure out some possible dates for, for that. Again, the procedure, just so we get our mind around how long to expect for that meeting, it is typically a 20-minute presentation by the, by the proposer of the amendment, 20 minutes from opposition, 20 minutes of opposition, and then five minutes.
Rebuttal time.
Rebuttal time for each, so about an hour of debate.
Discussion and then public comment.
Right. Okay. So, a couple of hours at a minimum that we would, we would need to set aside. Okay. All right. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Harris, everybody else from, and thank you, Mr. Poor, and others who made public comment. We appreciate your, your engagement today. Okay, we are now up to a final consideration of charter authorizing panel action, and that is on the Rock Bridge Montessori School, and this is also different. We have not done one of these in a good while.
The procedure is the same. The panel voted to revoke the charter of Rock Bridge Montessori School with the unanimous vote on May 16. There have been no requests for formal review. You may exercise your right to review this decision. We do have a representative from Rock Bridge present, should you have questions.
Okay. And so, if you could just clarify that, so, and is it, so, we have a Rock Bridge representative here, they, they could request up to now to, to review, right?
That's correct.
Okay.
I will say, we've been working closely with Rock Bridge on closure procedures, so it doesn't appear that a request for review will materialize.
Okay. All right. Okay. Any questions or comments on this? Okay.
A move not to review.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Ms. Zook, second by Ms. Rye. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. And I, I just want to say to you, you've put a lot of hours into this. I know it is, it's been a challenge, and, and we're cognizant of that, and, and appreciate it, and appreciate your, your always good nature when, over the last six months, as we've had lots of tough conversations, and so, I want to voice that on behalf of the board. I know this is not an easy day for you and others at Rock Bridge, but I think we all know it's the right thing to do.
And anybody will be lucky to get you, so just stand around, and you'll be getting job offers all over everywhere. And I do truly believe, had you been there from the beginning, that this school would have succeeded.
Thank you.
All right. Okay. Next up is a totally different issue. These are the format for the 2018 Educator Preparation Provider Quality Reports.
Good afternoon, Dr. Barth, Commissioner Key, members of the board, Frank Servideo, Office of Educator Effectiveness and Licensor, and I'm here to ask for your review and approval of the format for the Educator Preparation Provider Quality Reports, quality report for 2018. These reports, we've done, I think, since 2014, we've been providing these annual reports for educator preparation providers. They include a lot of They include a lot of demographic and statistical information about various aspects of educator preparation. This year, we have added a couple of sections to the report, due to the fact that we are, over the course of the next year, going to expand the report to the point where they will be rating and qualifying the institutions, the preparation providers. So, over the course of the next year, we're going to convene a committee who is going to actually establish what the factors will be to establish what is considered a quality preparation program. But in advance of that, we are simply reporting on all of the different factors that, as you see in the table of contents of the report in front of you. The three new sections are the, how the preparation programs address shortage areas, what are they doing about minority recruitment and enhancing the number of minority teachers in the state, and what about the, what are they doing with regard to partnerships with school districts? Those are the textual sections of the report. And on the statewide report, those will simply be summaries of what all of the institutions said. And then, of course, in addition to the statewide report, which I believe you saw or see, have a copy of, we also have an individual report for each institution. And as I said, we've been doing this for the last few years. The previous reports are on the ADE website, as will this be. So if you have any questions, it's basically a matter of you approving the, the format and the content of what the report actually will contain, or does contain.
Ms. Look?
Yeah. I was there when we requested that it be expanded this way, because I think it is, is, we want to be transparent, and if we have teacher prep programs where there's a percentage of students who aren't passing the praxis, then we need to know that, because a student may decide, well, I'll go to this college because I'm going to major in that, and they'll have me better prepared. I noticed that it was listed as a prep program at Eastem. What kind of prep do they do at Eastem?
Yes, actually, that is a new, I was going to say relatively new, but it's a brand-new Educator Preparation Program, which, is Joan in the room? Joan, would, could you address? Honestly, I would defer to Joan Luno, who is our Educator Preparation Unit Director, and she would know a lot more about Eastem than I would.
Okay.
Good afternoon, Joan Luno, Coordinator of Educator Preparation. The Eastem residency program is in about its fifth year, actually. And it's a small program, but it's a true residency program. It's a three-year program. The first year of the program, they are working alongside a cooperating teacher, not as teacher of record. In year two and three, they're under a provisional license, working as the teacher of record.
Okay.
You learn something every day, don't you?
I learn something new every day. And, and when you see places like Crowley's Ridge and ASU and Harding and Southern Arkansas University and Williams Baptist, who have such low pass rates in certain areas, is, do we call this attention to higher ed? How, how can that be addressed? Does Dr. Oa meet with the deans? I mean, what is the process for helping them understand our level of concern?
That's what the goal of the next year is, as we make these quality reports.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate the report.
Comment? I just want to point out, if y'all look on the first, let's see, it'll be page three. Look under the 2017-18 column of Beginning Teacher. It is the highest number in a decade.
Yeah.
And I hope Cynthia's recorder is still going, because, and the other reporter that was here, you know, will miss out on this unless he's got a recorder in here, too. But we're making progress, folks, and we can sit around and we, a lot of times, all we, you know, see focused on is the negative, but that is, that is huge.
Yes, it is.
And it's a testament to, as I mentioned, you know, earlier in my remarks about Ms. Cochran, you know, there are voices out there really propping up the teaching profession. And the Teachers of the Year over the last several years, our team at the department, the work that Joan is doing and the team with higher ed, we're making progress. And this just emphasizes and reaffirms what, you know, my theory, that over the next three to five years, some of these waivers that schools are having to bring to us are, are not going to be needed, because we're going to start filling these gaps. So, Dr. Frank, hey, great report, and, you know, these retention numbers, I think they're going to keep going up. The initial Beginning Teacher numbers are going to keep going up. And the reports like this are going to help us, because it gives us better data to go back to our partners and say, here's what's working, here's what's not, how can we get better? So thank you.
Thank you. And as an aside, I would like to point out on that point, early this week, we were in Minneapolis for the annual NASDAQ, National Association of State Teacher, State Teacher Education Certification Directors. And they were talking about national trends with regard to retention, and they're still touting the 50% loss of teachers after five years. And, and if you see Arkansas's data, we're doing much better than the national average.
Great. Dr. Oa?
Just another highlight, during our co-op tours, Great Rivers Educational Co-op, and I'm sure Commissioner Key probably would have loved to share this great information, but they had a 94% retention rate of novice, their novice teachers. And so we definitely appreciate the efforts that they have in place and that they would continue to, continue to raise that percentage of retaining their novice teachers.
All right. So if there are no other comments, then I would entertain a motion to accept this report. Second. Okay. All those in favor say aye. Motion, motion by Ms. Chambers, second by Dr. Hill. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Sharon, I'm sorry, I'm fading a little bit of my motion gathering.
Thank you all very much.
All right. Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Now we do go to Ms. Luno, and we are down to some praxis scores.
Joan Luno, Coordinator of Educator Preparation here at the ADE, and I've got the next three items on the agenda. And these are licensure assessment changes for the upcoming academic year. The first one is a newly generated Praxis Computer Science test. Y'all may remember that we implemented a computer science test back in spring of 2015, and we were using a test that we borrowed from Texas. It has taken a few years to get a new one created, and so that one has been created. And it's a Praxis Computer Science 5652 is the number. We met with a group of ed prep providers and school district personnel and Anthony Owen Group in April reviewed the test. We revised our competencies to align with the test and the current standards. Normally, we wait a year before we adopt a new test, but we feel like we want to go ahead and adopt this one this year, as it more aligns to what we're doing. One other additional note is that we had folks that were working towards preparing for this assessment. So ETS has added another testing window in August to allow them to test with the current test if they so choose. So our recommendation is to allow educator prep programs the opportunity to align with the programs of study and then to meet the changes that ETS is making in September. The department proposes a cut score of minus one SEM, which is a 142, and a start date of September 2018.
Okay. Any questions about this, this new test? Anyone over here?
Usually mastery for a student is considered 85%. Do we believe that a teacher who doesn't get 85% on the praxis can in fact have enough mastery to be able to convey and teach the student what they know?
Well, these tests aren't on that percent correct. They're on a scaled score, and so that, that we don't look at them like that. What we do is we go with the national cut score, and sometimes we do go below that, and that's why we're doing this in this case. A year from now, we'll review our cut score, and we may go back up to the nationally recommended.
Okay. Thank you.
That was, that was actually my question, when would we review the, especially with a new test? I know it, it's important to kind of recalibrate regularly, so.
We never like to lower a cut score, and so that's why this will give our ed prep programs, we have three now in the state, a year to realign their programs. Most of ours that have licensed have done that through testing out or through our non-traditional pathways. And I will say, we do have 143 licensed computer science teachers now, with the work we've done.
Okay. Thank you. Entertain a motion?
I move to approve the recommendation of the department.
Motion by Ms. Rye, second by Ms. Look. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. All right. Next up, post-secondary adult education, education licensure.
Okay. Again, Joan Luno, Coordinator of Educator Preparation here at the department. This change is for our adult education license. It's a post-secondary. We have, in the past, when we didn't have a test available for a licensure area, we used a current PLT. We've been meeting with career ed and will continue to meet with these, with them to revise competencies, but we also reviewed tests, and we feel like the fundamental subjects test is better aligned to what adult ed teachers do in the classroom. And so we are moving to adopt the fundamental subjects. It's Praxis 5511, with a cut score of 148, to be adopted for the adult ed license. And, and remember, that will be for add-on license. If they're first-time licensed, they would also take the PLT, which is aligned with all of our other licensure areas.
Okay. Any questions over here? Over here. I would entertain a motion.
I move to adopt the recommendation of the department.
All right. Motion by Ms. Rye, second by Mr. Black. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Excellent. And finally, the administrator scores, licensure scores.
Okay. Joan Luno, Coordinator of Educator Preparation, and this is for the school leader's licensure assessment that has been regenerated. It is Praxis 6990. With this one, we are going to wait the extra year and not adopt it till September of 2019, again, to allow our leadership prep programs, which are undergoing major revisions with an overhaul of the competencies, a year to align to that. But I just wanted to bring it to the board to get it approved, so they can start worked, working towards that. And so the recommendation is to adopt the school leader's licensure assessment with the nationally recommended cut score of 151, effective September 1 of 2019.
Ms. Cochran?
Is, is that comparable to the previous cut score? I mean, the difficulty level? Because I know we have way more certified principals in the state.
You can't compare one test to another, you know, from, from the regeneration. So that's just what the, what the panel recommend at the national level. But again, we could come back and review that, you know, once we get some scores.
Any other questions?
The score, the test, when I was licensed, we didn't have all of these praxis things. We had National Teacher Exam, which had little or nothing to do with anything I ever did as a teacher. So do these tests more accurately measure what in fact the teacher and or administrator is going to be needing to do?
I think the way we've moved to competency-based with our ed prep programs, they do. Because we align to national standards, we make sure we have a test aligned to the same standards.
Well, good.
Yes. We're working that way.
Yeah.
All right. Entertain a motion?
I move to adopt the recommendation of the department.
Second.
All right. Motion by Ms. Rye, second by Ms. Chambers. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll be back.
Okay. Great. Okay. We now move to the repeal of the mandatory attendance rule. Ms. Davis?
Shall I introduce myself, or are we familiar?
I think we know who you are.
So the rules that you have before you, the repeal of the mandatory attendance rules, and these rules have been approved by the governor of the repeal, and they did go out for public comment. We received no public comments on them. The law that these rules are based on had been repealed anyways. There was one line in here that ended up being applicable, that we have moved to the new standards, which you have approved. And it's also in law, too. So even for whatever reason, that still has to be followed by school districts. So if you don't have any objections, if you have any questions, I'll be able to answer them, but we do ask that you give final approval to these rules.
So, yeah. So this is covered in like the new law. We're not saying kids don't have to go to school a certain many, number of minutes, are we?
No. Okay. So these rules, and I did get a question, not in a public comment about these, these rules don't have anything to do with, like, compulsory attendance, and it doesn't have anything to do with that. These had to do with, like, ninth to 12th graders who were having to take classes all day long when they really only needed one credit, and so you were getting waivers of these all the time for kids, so that way they could go take classes at the college level or the VOTC or something of that nature. And so that law had been repealed, saying that they had to be on campus for so many hours a day, taking classes that they may or may not need.
And, and I understand that. I just, the more I think about that and think about a young person who doesn't have the maturity of most adults, to make a decision, they may or may not want to take an elective because it doesn't interest them, they'd rather go to work or they'd rather do this or that. It bothers me that that keeps them from being exposed to things that they might in fact benefit from, I know they would benefit from it, but they also might discover a talent or an interest that they didn't have otherwise, particularly, most of the, the district that I represent were very rural. And without being exposed at school, then, you know, they don't know what is out there. They just know what their neighbor's daddy does and what their mom does and, and I, it bothers me every time we give districts permission to say, well, they just need English so they can go for a period and then go do whatever. But I know that's not your issue.
Right.
But that, that's something that bears on my mind a lot.
I will say, just as a side note to that, because the law that these rules were based on was repealed, we also have, really have no statutory authority to implement rules. So if we were going to have to do that or put something else in there, it would have to be somewhere else in which we've been given the statutory authority to do so.
Right. I get it.
Well, yeah, because I, I think, I can't not bring up, this is, we're not giving you permission to say, you only come to take English and then you can go home. I mean, what, what we did this was in, why we did this was in response to, this waiver was the largest, the most requested waiver from districts that were creating flex mod scheduling, implementing things where they were trying to create more opportunities rather than limit or reduce the number of opportunities. If, you know how it works, pendulum swings back and we see that schools are not doing the right thing, we'll have to come back, and, and we've told them that. I mean, we, in our communication with superintendents and stakeholders, we've said, look, it's your responsibility to create these opportunities that aren't necessarily lock you into so many minutes a day in a classroom, taking role, all that. It's, if it is work, it's, it's connected to the learning. If it's activities, there are activities that are connected to the learning. So it, it's different than it was when, you know, when I was in school and you take English and you go, you know, go to work. It is different, so.
Hardship.
Yeah, I mean, it, so it's really about creating those opportunities and creating that flexibility, which you were providing through all the waivers that, and so now I'm going to look at our new high school principal down there and say, don't, don't let this get out of hand.
And I think that we did have some districts that were requesting this waiver, because they had students who maybe had been, you know, were older than the rest of the students there in the high school, who maybe only needed one credit to graduate, but they also had other obligations and they were just going to, you know, kind of at that choice of either they could drop out and not get it, because they didn't want to have to come to school, you know, six hours a day for one credit, when, you know, they are older than the rest of them and needed to maybe work or have a family. And so that was also another thing, that it helps those students be able to... And so that was also another thing, that it helps those students be able to, um, still continue in education and get a high school diploma while, uh, maybe going on to college or going to work or something like that.
Ms. Newton?
I also think that, that, um, uh, through our ESSA plan, through that, um, School Quality Index, that we've got some incentives built in, uh, for high schools to do the right thing. To, you know, they're going to be wanting to scramble and get every point they can, and so they're going to take and guide those, those students to the, to those things that are going to be educationally based. So I think those incentives are going to also help that.
Community service and other. All right, you, you understand the issue?
I move for final approval.
Second.
All right, motion by Ms. Wright, second by Dr. Hill. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose.
Dr. Barth, if I may, before Jennifer leaves, uh, this is her last meeting with us. Jennifer is going to be the first-ever Chief Privacy Officer of the State of Arkansas. An opportunity that came up through, uh, the Department of Information Systems. And tomorrow is her last day, but she won't be with us tomorrow because she'll be covering for us over at Legislative Council. So I wanted the board, uh, to know that, uh, we, we will miss her, um, but this is a fantastic opportunity. She has, she's the only one in the state of Arkansas with the experience that qualified for this position. I think if you look, I mean, they found the right one. Education, former experience with DIS, and we're going to miss her, uh, but Director Jones has got a real winner, and, um, we're real proud of you.
Thank you, thank you. So I was actually really hoping that you would review that charter tomorrow, but, so thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. All right, we are now, um, on item eleven, no, item ten, excuse me. Uh, and this is the, uh, National Board Prof, and Professional Teaching Standards Candidency and Certification Incentives.
Good, good afternoon, um, Lori Freino, Department of Education. I feel everyone's been doing work today, and I look like I've been sitting there doing nothing. I really have been listening. The National Board Teachers Rules, you all gave your final approval to those last month. Unfortunately, the wrong final version of the rules was appended to the appendix last, last month. And because there have been so many changes made, the wrong version was appended. You notice I'm using the passive voice so I don't have to admit who appended the wrong version. But in this agenda, we have the, the correct final version, and we respectfully request that the board modifies action of last meeting and grant its final approval to the rules appended to this agenda in lieu of those presented to the board in its May meeting.
Do we need to, um, actively undo that action?
According to ADE Parliamentarian Mary Claire Hyatt, she said that a modification would be appropriate.
All right.
And a modification would both effectively rescind the last set of rules, and it also would give final approval to the set of rules that's attend, that's attached to the, this appendix.
Sounds great.
I move what she said.
All right, move a modi. Motion by Ms. Newton to modify, uh, our action last month with, uh, passage of a, a new, uh, set of rules as, as the final rules, um, and, uh, second by Ms. Zook. All those in favor say aye. Pose same sign, okay.
Thank you.
We're glad you got out of Africa. I said, we're glad you came out of Africa.
It was pretty wonderful.
All right, um, item eleven, uh, Jennifer Dedman, uh, back with us. Uh, and this, these are the parental involvement plans and family community engagement.
Um, in a similar move, the wrong set of rules and comments was attached to your agenda, and I have a corrected version here for you. The State Board released these proposed rules for public comment on April twelfth. A, a public comment hearing was held on April nineteenth and ended, uh, the period on May fifteenth. As you see, I left off a, a set of comments to the, uh, item that was attached in the board's agenda packet. There are lots of comments here, but, uh, none of the comments received resulted in substantive changes to the proposed rules. And I'll give you a second to review that and the summary at the very end of your packet.
Was this what was sent us in an email? Is this what you sent? To correct? Okay, so we have already seen it.
Oh, excellent. Then no. I didn't know about. These should be new. It's, uh, the ones that you previously saw included comments from Lucas Harder from ASBA. The new comments attached from Jennifer Wells are at the end, and there's, and they're added to the summary. I'm available for questions. Um, department staff respectfully requests that the board give final approval to these rules.
I guess I would need to ask, um, Ms. Wright and Ms. Cochran if these seem to be in line and complement the work you're trying to get done, uh, on community engagement?
Very much, I, I, these I know have been before us before, and I'll just continue to reaffirm, uh, very much so.
Are you all comfortable moving forward? Okay, then I will, I'll entertain a motion on these whenever, whenever someone is ready.
It would be helpful if these pass, if you'll go ahead and take the others out and put these in so that when we refer back to meetings, that this document will be available. Can that be done?
Um, I think the, the request is that we replace the items. Can, can that be done on board? Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, well, I'll take it, Ms. uh. Okay, um, is there a mo, motion?
Move to first, second.
All right, um, everybody's comfortable, motion by Ms. Newton, second by Ms. Wright. All those in favor of final approval on these, say aye. Pose same sign, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dedman. That moves us, Ms. Hollis Ford, another set of rules, um, and these are Act nine thirty related.
Yes, um, the ADE rules governing the Arkansas Educational Support and Accountability Act were approved by you all on April twelfth. Um, they went out for public comment, and we did receive, um, public comments. Um, made a few changes as indicated on the summary provided to you. Um, none of those were substantive, and so we are seeking final approval. Um, as Ms. Zook, you pointed out, yes, um, the ADE public comments and responses were omitted originally from the board materials as well as the summary, and so those were provided to you by Ms. Hollis on Monday, I believe.
Entertain a motion for final approval on these rules.
I'll move for final approval.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Wright, second by Mr. Black. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, all right.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. And now, we are back to, now we're on some rule repeal. Ms. Freino, and then I'll tell you my game plan on these.
Okay, thank you, Lori Freino, Department of Education. As I mentioned to you all last month, you know, we're going to have the opportunity as an agency, as are all agencies in the state, to repeal, kind of as a chunk, any rules that we do not feel are necessary any longer. So we went through all of the rules that we could find, ADE rules, and made determinations as to which of them are no longer needed, you know, those for which laws have been repealed, those for which procedures have changed, some of which kind of got incorporated into other rules along the way. And we are presenting this list to you, and these are the rules that we propose that we submit to the General Assembly Subcommittee and ask that they be, they all be repealed. And if you have any questions, Courtney, Jennifer, and I will be happy to answer them.
I think what makes the most sense, if folks have, if we could get a list of those about which folks have questions, I think that'll help organize the conversation. So does anybody have questions on particular rule repeals? Okay, I had a question, I had questions on the closing the achievement gap rules and the board subpoena rules. Those are my two. Anybody else? Any others? Okay, on the, um, the, the board subpoena, uh, this is.
Can you tell us?
Well, now I'm trying to find it.
No.
Did it get pulled?
What is, the board subpoena, I, there might have been something related to the board subpoena in the new standard operating procedure.
Okay, issues of subpoenas by, uh, by SBE. So, this is, uh, Ms. Davis, um, you're not gone yet.
I'm never, how about that?
So my question, so the subpoena power is recognized in the operating procedures. My concern was whether the operating procedures, which do not have, have not gone through the rule-making process, will not go through, don't go through the rule-making process, is that, um, sufficient, um, procedural, uh, direction if this board were to ever issue a subpoena? Is, or do we need those rules, uh, that were in place to justify that power?
Well, the rules are, um, an exact replication of the law, so you already have been given the power in the law, and that's why it's being incorporated into the operating procedures. But, um, the rule didn't add anything to it, so there was just no sense in having a rule that was just going to repeat the law.
Okay.
So you already have the power given by law to do so.
Okay, and the law remains in place, and so.
That's correct.
Okay, okay. And then on the, um, closing the achievement gap, um, this is, yeah, Ms. Hollis Ford.
Yes.
So could you talk a little bit about that? I mean, uh, in terms of, these were the, um, was, was this the, the, the state closing the achievement gap commission? Are these the individual school closing the achievement gap, um, bodies? The, those that are at the district level?
I apologize, I did not bring a copy with me, um.
I had trouble finding it too, and so I was, I know we have a state body on closing the achievement gap, but then there were also, uh, individual district bodies.
And if I recall correctly, and I can verify this quickly, but, um, this was the, the schools that had to be identified by No Child Left Behind, um, and of course, the requirements both on the state and on those schools. And as is indicated with the passage of ESSA, which essentially made NCLB obsolete, um, we are not required to do any of those things under, that were delineated in the rules.
Okay.
So I can check real quick.
Okay, I mean, I, I would have, I just didn't know where we were on the, on the state commission, the state commission on closing the achievement gap that, which would get reports, and it's been a, I think there's been a lot of frustration by that group, um, but I, I just wanted, I was just curious where we were on, on that and what this was doing to the achievement gap issue.
I apologize again, I don't know that, but I will be happy to find out and report back to you.
Okay. I think it, I think I'm fine with it because it's a No Child Left Behind remnant, but, um, I just, that was my only other one that I had some, uh, want some clarification on. Does anybody else have questions, concerns? Okay, I'm fine with the subpoena. I'm, I'm satisfied on that one. So, uh, proper motion would be to, um, to repeal, uh, these.
I would say to approve the list of rules that ADE will present to the General Assembly.
All right, perfect. So you have a list before you, the motion is to approve that list for the ADE to take forward to the appropriate body of the General Assembly.
And so this is taking forward the rules that stay, or the rules that are repealed?
The repeal rules. These are the ones that go away.
Yes, these are the ones that are going to be repealed. Now, we also have a report, we're going to do a big, huge report that's going to have all of our rules in it. Now, the ones we're keeping, those will also have to be submitted, but we do not have to get your authority because they're already in place. But because only you have the authority to repeal a rule or to get final approval of a rule, we have to get your approval on the rules that we want to repeal.
Ray Clare?
Still moved?
All right, uh, motion by Ms. Zook. Second by Ms. Chambers. All those in favor say aye. Pose same sign. Okay, thank you. And then, next up, Mr. Cosby. These are the Final Accreditation Report, and of course, we've had one change on this already.
Roy Cosby, former program manager of Standards for Accreditation, and Commissioner Key kind of mentioned that earlier, and I think he's going to go with that tomorrow. Now program manager for what we call Standards and System Support. We have combined school improvement and Standards for Accreditation together. Today, we're asking you to approve the Final Accreditation Report for the seventeen eighteen school year, and I've just been advised the change that we had, the O C O L E is already in place.
Okay, but the rest of the list is as presented. Ms. Newton?
I just had a question, uh, because it didn't give a reason. Could you tell me why the, uh, school that was, school, high school and district that was placed on probation was placed on probation? Do you have that information?
For which type was?
It was Watson Chapel High School and District.
Yes, for Watson Chapel, uh, the high school. Uh, they had an assistant principal that had an expired license.
Okay, and then did that automatically put the district into probation?
No, the district is a different issue. A curriculum supervisor did not have their license.
So both have more licensure issues?
The, the curriculum supervisor falls under the district personnel, that's why it's under the district list.
Any other questions? Okay, any other questions? All right, I would entertain a motion to, uh, approve this list.
I move to approve.
All right, motion by Ms. Wright, second by, um, Mr. Black. All those in favor say aye. Pose same sign. And I'll ask you, I know I ask you every year, uh, but what happens next? Uh, for those, uh, those, those, um, those districts that are, uh, after multiple years, could you talk through process at this point? Or is, are we, is, is this the end of the stage?
Well, this is the first, be a first-year probation, so if it's two years probation, then there's a process we go through to write. For right now, the first year probation, they would have publicized this on their website and the newspaper, letting their patrons know that they are in probation for this year.
Okay. All right. But we have no schools that come back for a more...
No.
...a thorough process with us at this point?
Correct.
Okay.
And I know y'all have had a long day, but I appreciate my team. They do a lot of hard work. This is a year-long process, so I just want to let them know publicly, they do fantastic work and I appreciate them very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Yes? Okay. Ms. Leno is back and these are educator licensure programs protocols.
Joan Leno, Coordinator of Educator Preparation. And these are the policies or the protocols that govern program approval for ed prep programs at higher ed institutions. Y'all have already approved these a few times. We started bringing them to the board last year when we repealed our ed prep policies and rolled some of that into the licensure rules. As you flip through there, you'll notice that everything that was changed was highlighted in yellow. There were three big items that were changed. One of the first things we did was we changed the language to add science of reading to match the pathways that learning services have just recently defined. And so we wanted to ensure that our prep programs were aligned to what our PD was doing in the school districts. So that's one change. Another change is changing some of the language with the partnership section to match CAPE accreditation and adding to that. The third one was adding language for our leadership prep programs that are about to go, undergo redesign. And so that work was done with a working group of higher ed representatives. So if you have any questions about any items, I'd be glad to answer them.
All right. Any questions about these protocols? Okay. I will entertain a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Chambers, second by Ms. Wright. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. And last two items. Ms. Hyatt, our operating, revisions to our operating procedures, which we discussed last month.
Thank you, Dr. Barth. Mary Claire Hyatt with the department on the consideration for approval of the proposed amendments to the State Board operating procedures. These are the amendments that we discussed at the work session after the board meeting last month. If approved, they will take effect on July 1st, 2018, and it needs to pass by three-fourths vote.
Okay. Of those...
Of those here in voting.
Okay. Great. All right. I think you, we've walked through all these, but if folks see last-minute changes they would like to make, I will therefore entertain a motion, but we probably do need to do a roll call on this one, just to be sure we have the proper majority.
And this is exactly as it was presented at the work session?
The only thing that I changed is that I had a typo that we'd have pointed out and I changed the typo. Thank you, by the way.
May J. Friday.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Newton, second by Dr. Hill, and Commissioner, if you'll give us a roll call. Ms. Wright?
Yes.
Ms. Zook?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Dr. Hill?
Yes.
Ms. Newton?
Yes.
Mr. Black?
Yes.
Six aces. All right. Thank you very much for your hard work on that and hopefully it will smooth some things out.
Great.
Starting next month. Okay. Next up, election of chair and vice chair, and Ms. Chambers, you are representing the committee.
In summary, I have the privilege of being asked to chair a nominating committee that met in April and put forward unanimously, oh, and the nominating committee, to be clear, is Ms. Wright and Mr. Williamson and myself, put forward a nomination recommendation for Dr. Barth to be chair for the year 2018-19, and Ms. Reese Dean to be his vice chair. They both accepted, which was put forward then in May, and that nomination accepted by the board. And so procedurally today, my understanding is that we will take a vote. I don't know what the protocol is, but I would, I would open to the board. Are there any questions or is there any discussion? So I would assume, given that the nomination has come forward and already been accepted by the board, alls we need to do is vote. Hearing no further discussion, all in favor of that fine set of leaders for 18-19, please say yes.
Yes.
Are there any days? We would like to congratulate our new chair and vice chair, and thank you for taking us forward.
Thank you. Thank you again for confidence. And, and Ms. Dean, we realized in the middle of the day, had already told us she was not going to be here today. She is at a family wedding, and I know she is.
Just the best, right.
But my, I appreciate the confidence you've shown in me and appreciate the opportunity to work with most of you moving forward. And also know that tomorrow we will begin talking about the, the year ahead and our, and different liaison roles, task forces and other things, and so that will be part of our work tomorrow. We had a really long day today. We've got a shorter day tomorrow as a result of the cancellation of the work session, it appeared. The cancel, the work session's canceled, and we will begin to talk right now about when might be a time for a special meeting. So I will see you all at dinner if there is a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn. Could we talk about when we want to meet before we leave?
Yeah.
For the special meeting?
Because some of them aren't going to be here for dinner, some aren't going to be here tomorrow.
Okay.
So, so maybe, we probably need to do that before you adjourn.
Okay. Let's do, let's talk about that before we adjourn.
Can somebody see if Alexandra is around or can get her on the phone? Okay.
Has she had a chance to solicit?
That's what we need to find out.
I think while we're waiting on her, if everybody will look at their calendars...
Yeah, I can say already.
To see when they absolutely can't and see if we can match one can.
I am in DC next Tuesday and Wednesday, but I could be here Monday or next Thursday afternoon. And then the following week, I'm afraid I'm out of state the whole week as well.
I'm out of state Monday through Thursday next week.
And I can't do Friday or the next week. I can do this coming week, Monday, certain times, Tuesday, certain times, and Thursday in the afternoon, but I can't do Wednesday, Friday, or anytime after the 22nd.
Okay. My head, my head's starting to already get confused.
Yeah.
Why don't we, so...
So I guess we'll see tomorrow. Is tomorrow an option?
Just a second. So, we're going to look at between now and the end of the month, because I think it is prudent to have the current board do this. And so I'm going to start over here with Ms. Newton. Tell the days that you are unavailable.
I would be unavailable on next week, Monday through Thursday, and the next Monday, the 25th.
Okay.
So it'd be 18th through the 21st, I would be unavailable and the 25th.
Did we already decide against tomorrow?
Not necessarily. So you are available, I think we're all available tomorrow, correct? The, you are available on the 22nd and the 26th through the 29th?
Yes.
Okay. Dr. Hill?
I'm out. Tuesday evening through Friday.
Of next week?
Yep.
Okay. The following week you are available?
I'm available following week.
Okay, okay. So you're available the 18th and the 25th through the 29th?
I'm flexible next week.
Okay.
And is availability defined as can be here or can it just...
Participate, participate in my phone, although it will be a little bit lengthy meeting, but, but that is, if there is an option.
Isn't the first week of July also an option?
No, July, I believe y'all, y'all...
June 20th, 30th is your last.
July 1 starts the school year.
Oh, yeah. June 30th is our last.
Yeah, yeah.
And then...
Would you go on Wednesday's second?
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, if we want this board to, yeah.
Yeah.
I'm available all next week in person and by phone the second week. I'm out of town.
But you are available by phone?
Available by phone.
Okay. But available in person, 18th through 22nd?
Yes.
And then by phone the next, okay, so you're in good shape. Okay.
And I could possibly, if I know, I could possibly be available by phone late next week as well. Somebody needs to call Brett.
Okay.
And I talked to Alexandra and she said that Friendship said that they would need about a week or, I mean, you know, a little less, so possibly Wednesday, and that the Little Rock School District did not say. So, but obviously due to the issue of time constraints, the sooner the better anyways. But she said possibly Wednesday if the board is available.
Okay. 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 And then, so we're, we're really looking at the 20, 20th to the 29th. Mr. Black, you're...
I'm available.
Okay. You're available. Ms. Zook?
I cannot do it Wednesday and I could do it Thursday after 1:30, and I can't do it from the 22nd, that Friday, until July 2nd.
Okay. You could do the 21st.
I could after 1:30.
After 1:30.
Or I could do it tomorrow.
Okay.
But they don't want tomorrow, is my understanding, right?
Correct.
And in all fairness to them, we need to do it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I mean, y'all did ask for...
Sure.
...credit information, so they want to be prepared.
So let's, let's look at the afternoon of the 21st. Is that...
I'm actually in Little Rock. That would be perfect.
Okay.
We do have a task force meeting, but we should be, we might be able to move it. We would just have to, right now, we have a task force meeting from 1:00 to 2:00, but I'm available after that.
Okay.
Well, we could do 2:30.
Um, could, I'd say, so 2:30?
I'll be driving that day, so I would be, I wouldn't even be able to do phone, so...
Okay. So none of that day? Okay.
Yeah, I'm, I'm in Jonesboro on the 21st.
Okay.
I mean...
We're not going to let you vote in.
Well, I was going to say, I mean, if, if you, June is crazy.
Sure.
We're at all the co-ops and then next week, so, you know, if it gets to where everyone else except me can, can be there and legal says I have to be here, then we'll work around it, but that, just know that next week's pretty sketchy for all the department folks.
Okay. All right. And, okay, Ms. Zook, again, you, when do you, when do you leave?
I can, I cannot do it, well, let me see if there's no time on Wednesday. I think there's no time on Wednesday.
How's Wednesday for you? When do you get that?
No, I'm, I'm in, in meetings all day in DC that day that I unfortunately won't be able to step out of.
I could do it after 3:30 on Wednesday. 3:30 or after, but I, and I could do it after 1:30 on Thursday. These are not things that I have control over.
Sure.
Sorry.
Okay.
And for me, for next week, I could do Monday, the 18th.
Yeah, it sounds like we're looking at Wednesday.
Which I know that that's not, but they wouldn't be ready, so then the 20, I, I wouldn't mind, I could spend the night here on the 21st and be here the 22nd if it's helpful.
Okay. You do the 22nd?
I could do the 22nd.
I can't.
22nd, 22nd.
If, if you could do it early, early, early in the morning, I could do it.
On the 22nd?
But that might make it hard for the people coming from out of town.
Okay. And that's fine?
I'd have to be finished by 10:30.
And you could stay?
Yeah, I don't mind spending the night.
Okay. So let's, let's...
Mr. Williamson's available every day next week except for Tuesday.
Okay.
Okay.
So I think we've figured it out. You can be here Friday morning?
Yes.
Has anyone checked with Ms. Dean? And there's no way to check with her?
Oh, that's right. She's in the wedding. That's right.
Um, then 8:00 AM would probably be...
And Mr. Williamson did?
I think he can, I'm sending the message right now.
Okay.
So how much time do we think that'll leave?
Two hours. So is it finishing about 10?
If we started at about 8?
Eight to 10.
Will that work for everyone?
I'm sorry. It's fine.
No, it's fine.
Or we could do it Thursday afternoon.
I can't Thursday.
Yeah, she can.
Most people can.
Yeah. So let's, let's at least tentatively plan on 8:00 AM on Friday, the 22nd, for those, and some may have to call in, but that will, I think, be a, a good, a good time.